In the general fund, that $1.8 million is really attributed to five general areas. And the departments will get into that in their presentations. But the five areas are public safety, which is 565,000. That's basically personnel and collective borrowing. Over 90% of the public safety budget is personnel. So anything that drives personnel drives the entire budget. Debt service is an additional 560,000. Ms. Larson will get into that when we do in the finance department. But that's nonutility capital projects. We're borrowing a lot of stuff over a shorter period of time because of the length of time of the asset. It would be inappropriate to borrow for 20 years. So we're doing more 10-year borrowing, which is actually a good thing when you think about Moody's, their evaluation. One of their criteria is how much debt do we have of 10 years or less? So that's a good thing. Public works is going up about 225,000. That's primarily for commodities, basically fuel and road salt. Some of the levy-supported departments such as Go Transit, the library, museum, they're having declining revenues. We'll get into each of those individually during the departments. But that accounts for about $250,000 right there. And then everybody else is the remaining 250,000. But I would point out that some of those costs are in general government, but they're really more allocated there from an accounting standpoint. It's just easier to do it that way. But liability insurance, workers' compensation insurance, which applies to every department, and primarily it applies to the big three, police, fire, and public works, as well as retirement payouts. If you recall, we concentrated retirement payouts in the general government account as well. That's a big part of our increase. So those are the five general areas. There's no increase in health insurance or dental insurance for 2019, so we're happy about that, although with public safety, we're adding dental insurance as part of the package. So that's the only real increase, because other than that, our costs for both of those insurances are zero for 2019. So that's the expenditure side. On the revenue side, it really, I think the story is really about intergovernmental revenues. And what I'm going to pass out is an updated report because, or an updated graph. I'd given you a graph of intergovernmental revenues, and several years ago, the legislature committed itself to providing revenues no later than September 15th. Well, we still were getting revenues as of last week. And our payment for municipal services program, one of the mayor's favorite topics of discussion, went down yet again. We thought it was going to stay pat, but we didn't get the final, final numbers until, was it Wednesday or Thursday, Trina?
They arrived in the mail Friday morning.
Well, thank you very much, state. So here we are, changing the numbers yet again. But the story about intergovernmental revenues is the same that we've told. When the economy's bad, I totally understand when the state has rough times and they have to cut back revenues, because if you're truly sharing, you're sharing the good times and the bad. Well, these are supposedly good times, and the state is not increasing. In fact, our intergovernmental revenue, our largest intergovernmental revenue and our second-largest revenue period is the state shared revenue program. We got a whopping $9,400 increase, which is 0.1%, and that was by rounding up to get the .1%. The state hasn't restored shared revenues or anything of that source. Similarly, general transportation aids went down about 152,000. Payment for municipal services, what was the ultimate reduction? It was about $78,000. So, and then expenditure restraint went up a little bit, but only 1.7%.
Is this going to, could this change before we approve our budget? Or is there a deadline?
Yeah, the deadline was September 15th, and we got the last of the revenue numbers, but we've gotten them all officially now. So I...
You said last year in the budget that that 18 was a one-time deal.
Yes.
That kind of reflects it, it looks like.
It was kind of a bump, and now that revenue went down. That's 152. So you can see that, you know, we rely heavily on state aid. Why? Because we don't have the resources or the, excuse me, we don't have the authority to raise much other revenues. So when those revenues are restricted by the state, specifically income tax, sales tax, things like that, other states, cities have the ability to do that. We don't. The only revenue we have is property taxes. So in this age of let's get the property taxes down, which, again, I totally agree with that. I think our property taxes are too high relative to other states. They're very high. But that's because that's the only tool they've put in our toolbox on the revenue side. So when the state revenue goes down, there's one revenue that's going to go up. And that's, that's very unfair to council, who's ultimately the one that sends out the tax bill and everything. What Ms. Larson did to kind of fold this all together, there's actually a couple little good news things in there as well. There's a chart that Ms. Larson gave you, because we also didn't get the final numbers on assessed value until, now that was, that wasn't last week, but that was the week before last.
That was the week before.
So, and Mr. Alger and Ms. Larson took a look at it and made sure that it seemed right, but our assessed value went down further. So we've made adjustments for that.
Now, on that assessed, are you talking business or are you talking residential or both?
I'm talking all across the board, but primarily, commercial assessed values went down, or excuse me, equalized values went up faster than assessed value. That means our ratio got bigger, or our ratio got lower. It's around 94.9%. We were anticipating 96.3%. That doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're swinging assessed value, it swings it quite a bit. Without getting into all the details, because we'd be here all day to talk about it, you gave me this chart, right?
Yep.
Okay, Trino, maybe you can walk them through it, because...
Yep. So what this is really focusing on, it's giving us the updated mill rate, and I also have included at the top of your sheet the new assessed value. So our assessed value that we'll be working for, for the current tax bills is the $3,723,405,332. What that essentially did is it, when we had the higher mill rate and the higher assessed value, in our initial budget mill rate projection, we had projected a savings of 15 cents. When we received the final mill rate calculation and did calculate that, you'll see that we're starting at $10.56, which is just a fraction smaller where we left last year. And I would anticipate that is the final change in the assessed value. We did have some other items that were good news that came in after we did publish the prelim budget. One of them was the ICI. You'll see that in all of the departments' budgets. That is on another holiday this year, and so we have a credit for that. The municipal services payment, that was something that was unexpected. We were anticipating that to go up with the additional developments that we've seen through state facilities, but that we did receive a cut of the 78,200. And then one last good news we had, which helped offset that increase in the mill rate due to the change in assessed value, and that was the ambulance revenues. And looking at where we were at year-to-date, we were able to increase those revenues. So if you were to accept the three staff-proposed changes as part of the budget process, you'll see we're starting today at about $10 and about 51 cents, so down from the prior year.
So we're down about four cents as, from last year. But again, with the decreases in assessed value across the board for personal property, commercial, and manufacturing, we were expecting a much larger, a much larger increase in value and a bigger decrease in the tax rate. So that's, we'll get into all the details of those three adjustments, but if we had had that wisdom a month ago, those would have been in the base budget, and so staff feels it's appropriate. ICI, just for those of you who are at home wondering what ICI stands for, that's income continuation insurance, basically a disability insurance for employees. And we haven't paid that for a number of years, because we've had the premium holiday. So anyway, that's the basic overview, and you'll get into a lot of the details as we get to the department budgets. Are there any questions about the overall budget before we get into the departmental budgets?
One small question, I'll ask it of you instead of Fitz when he gets here tomorrow. You just talked about the ICI, and that's, that was one of them. But two, the health insurance admin fee that's being charged now to all budgets that wasn't before, was that rolled in, in their previous health insurance costs? And now we're separating it off for an admin fee, or why is that?
When we were self-insured, we could include the admin costs in our, in our base rates. But now that we are fully insured, those admin costs have to be paid, and we cannot pass that on to the employee. So whatever percentage that the employer picks up, and, or, excuse me, whatever percentage the employee picks up, we can't pass that on, but we still have to get it paid for somewhere. So as Ms. Larson and I talked about it, we felt it was appropriate to basically assess that to each individual department.
Just kind of a question, under the expenditure summary, under other departments, 250,000. We're attributing those modest increases in other operating departments such as parks and community development for 120,000. Some of this forced the Oshkosh image campaign, and then retirement payouts, and those are mostly public safety. I guess it seems kind of like a little catch-all cleanup category there. The Oshkosh image campaign, is that like 30,000?
20,000.
20,000?
This is a catch-all, because the, when you add up all the, the 1.8 million, what's left after you attribute these four gen, these four larger areas, was roughly 250. So...
But why would we put the public safety costs in that rather than under public safety on number one, where we already have that increased?
That's basically workers' compensation, workers' compensation insurance, liability insurance. Those costs are in general government, even though they're attributable from an account, from a cost accounting standpoint, they can get assessed over. And when we do our annual reports, we do demonstrate that, but for budgeting purposes, it's just easier to get paid out of one account.
Okay. And then the parks and community development portion comes up to about 120,000. Is that also related to workers' comp and liability, or what?
No, that would be just their individual departments. Things are charged to that account. And they're, they can, over the next four hours, you're going to get all that.
Okay.
We were just trying to summarize it and simplify it as much as possible.
Another influencing factor, and that would be fuel. Public, the central garage pays for all the fuel for the entire city, so the fire trucks there, the police cars, that all comes out of that central garage budget. The fuel is not allocated out separately to those individual departments.
But we have that listed as the reason up in number three, under public works.
Yes, that is. That's what, she's just using that as another example of, of a cost that gets centralized. That one just happens to be in public works.
Okay.
But the retirement payouts, liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, those are all charged to general government, even though all departments benefit from those, from those costs. So that's, that, if, there are no other general questions. When we get into the finance, we can certainly, you know, get into some of those details as well. Community development is our first department. You'll see that on, let's see, I think Trina had the pages there.
Page 29 for assessor.
You're going to start, okay, we'll start with assessor. And assessors is proposed to go up approximately 14,600 or 2.8% when Mr. Davis and Mr. Alger are here.
Thank you. In general terms, the assessors division works with existing staff and a contractor for the commercial appraisals. We do personal property, land, and improvements. And Mr. Alger has a lot of transactions to track, properties to inspect on an annual basis, and information to provide to appraisers and property owners and potential buyers. So maybe we could go over some of the links of the, to the strategic plan and the accomplishments and your typical goals for, on an annual basis.
Sure, sounds good. So the links to the strategic plan are, in the center, it's to maintain the equity in appraising all classes of property in the city, make sure responding to requests from citizens, and provide the public with information on our actions and decisions. We work with economic development when they need us for appraisals or performance, TIFs. Then we review appraisals for other departments when they have questions and would like to have feedback on values.
If I'm going to chime in one point right there, under equity, we appraise the residential and commercial. The Department of Revenue appraises the manufacturing.
Yes, the Department of Revenue appraises the manufacturing, real estate, and personal property, and we handle the locally assessed property for the other classes, commercial and residential, are the main bulk of those classes.
So from a bigger picture, it's getting more complicated from my perspective when it comes to the personal property, as they've exempted more and more elements of the personal property category.
So for the benefit of viewers at home, when we talk about our link to the strategic plan on maintaining equity and appraising all classes of property in the city of Oshkosh, I guess it would be an omission for us not to talk about how some of the equity is lost because of the dark store loophole in terms of that appraisal practice in the states, while in some of these lawsuits that have resulted in those decreased assessments, correct?
The assessors division is ground zero when it comes to the effect of those, because we spend a lot of time researching those particular parcels. The staff ends up working with the attorneys on any of the court proceedings. So it's a, it's a major element of what the assessors have been doing over the last few years.
I would assume there have been many hours spent on that.
Yes, there's quite a bit of time in dealing with the fact that we don't have a clear idea of how we should handle those properties. So we can use that from the state, just so that we know how we should handle them at a minimum. And if we can't consistently value property, then we're going to continue to have to deal with that on the back end when we start getting into legal matters and trying to have the courts decide it for us. So it'd be helpful if the law was cleared up.
Certainly would.
As far as significant accomplishments, we completed a residential dwelling style update this year, first time that the DOR updated our styles for residential houses, what we call them, in like 20 years. So that took a little time for us to transfer all of our data from what it had been to the new styles that they wanted. And then our regular ongoing accomplishments is we sent out just over 1,200 real estate notices and over 1,500 personal property notices. As mentioned before, that was a little more complicated as we were on the fly trying to figure out how the exemption of machinery and personal property was going to come out. But we were able to get that done on time. We completed the open book and the board review, made sure the assessment rolls were available for both. We submitted all the reports that Department of Revenue required in timely manner. We analyzed the sales that were out there for the year, did the sales ratio internally. We also reviewed, when you look at our sales permits and neighborhood reviews as a whole, 15% of the properties were reviewed. We submitted the sales to the Department of Revenue, over 2,000 sales to their provide data now, which is what they require us to submit all sales on, which they also use for their sales ratio analysis. When we talk about equalized value, that plays a role in that. And we processed over 5,300 building permits, and we updated our manufacturing values this year to sync with our 2017 revaluation. We performed residential, commercial, neighborhood reviews to try to get a certain percentage of those updated, keeping them current to save us money and have a higher quality product when we actually have to do another revaluation.
Just one minute. Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So when we're referring to neighborhood maintenance in those reviews, what exactly does that mean?
Yeah, I just alluded to that slightly, but I can, basically, we have to review the sales and the permits, and then eventually we'll have to do a revaluation. In order to have a quality product, we need to have quality records. And so what we do is we go through a certain percentage of properties every year in order to make sure that we have those ready for any time we're asked to do a revale, whether that be the council's discretion or the state says we have to do it. And what neighborhood review is made up of is simply sending a letter asking the property owners to let us go through the property, so we can have a current record.
So the neighborhood maintenance term that we're using here...
Maintenance of records.
Maintenance of records. It's an administrative thing, it's not a property condition thing?
Well, a part of any appraisal is making sure that we're looking at what the condition of the property is for its age, but it is truly a maintenance operation, where we're, we're taking the information and we're capturing it, but we're not applying it until we apply it to all, all properties at the same time, just for equity purposes.
Okay.
And then I think we left off with just a listing of the reports that are completed. I think I'm getting into objectives to be accomplished the next year. There's, I didn't mention we transitioned to that, but all the reports that the Department of Revenue requires, we have to complete the assessment roll, we have to have municipal assessment report, which basically lists all the values that we have for every class of property, what the changes are up and down. Tax inter-rental district, or the TAR report, listing what value we have in all the TIF districts. We have the statement of assessment. Exempt computer reports have had to be filed in the past, that's being phased out, as they're not reporting the exempt computers anymore, because they're exempt without reporting. Previously, they were exempt, but they had to be reported, so we tracked it. And then we have the annual assessment report, which is required by the Department of Revenue. Then we need to validate and review the residential, commercial sales for the following, this upcoming year. We update sales on our website, keep that current, supply people with the information that we have on sales, and then we're completing the Zone B attachment for the Town of Algoma parcels this coming year.
And why do we do that? I mean...
Which portion?
Town of Algoma. Why do we do that? What reach assessment?
Well, it's because the previous were in the town, but it's being attached to the city. So we have those parcels that we're now, are now part of the city. As of 20, middle of 2018, they're part of the city, but it's for tax purposes, they'll be listed on our tax roll for 2019 tax year. So as of January 1st of this year, we have to have them all in place, so that they'll be on the roll this following year.
That was part of the boundary agreement?
Yeah.
And I think we'll have another section of parcels that come in in 2023, so the assessor will have to put those all in the city system as well.
And does that affect what we pay back to the town in taxes? Because don't we have kind of like an agreement that for so many years, we'll pay?
Not in this case. These attachments were done so that something like that wouldn't take place.
Okay, so...
But the real issue here is, there's, there's not always consistency between the way the surrounding town assesses and the way we assess. And this is really to make sure, from a quality control standpoint, that we're assessing their properties consistent with the way Luke assesses all our other properties.
For our purposes, it's starting from scratch. I mean, we have to go out there and list them all, get all the owner information, all the property record data, and value all those properties.
All right.
So, and then I moved down to page 130, which is key performance measures, and this just breaks out the detail of what I've just described as far as what our accomplishments were. We're looking at the first one, the accuracy of data. We spoke to that just briefly earlier, but just the sales transfers, we keep track of the numbers, permits and neighborhood reviews, our maintenance reviews, and just gives you the, the history from '15, '16, and '17 on what we had accomplished with those. The goal is 10%, and on the prior page, we had 15% that we actually reviewed, so we met that goal.
That, that's actually divided between, the commercial is done by our contract assessor, who does commercial. Tyler Technology, they do the 10% commercial, and our staff does the residential.
Is that a year-to-year contract?
Yes, an optional year, and we're suggesting picking up that option year for 2019.
Okay.
And then getting on, just to the next goal, was completed a Department of Revenue reporting, and I break out some of the numbers as far as the number of notices that were, were sent here, which I mentioned on the first, the last page. Then there's the MAR, the TAR, and those are the abbreviations for the reports. I give the dates when the municipal assessment report was submitted, and each other, the other reports, along with the sales ratio analysis. And then next one is just public relations. We're looking at having, making sure our website is up to date and it has current data, some of the data we're collecting when we're talking about neighborhood reviews, you know, that data is displayed there, so that people can see what their most current information is, along with other, every other change that we make. Showing just that we do have a lot of people that are using the website. Some of these numbers are spiked due to our revaluation, because a lot of people hit the site during a revale, more than we would normally have, but we always have good traffic on our site. Then we, we're updating our photos when we're out in the field, make sure we have current photos. Photos are required, according to the Department of Revenue, we need to have those. So it's good to make sure we're taking them while we're already there. Then we're making sure we're assisting people who come in, and then we're also communicating through our reviews and our letters when we're doing our normal work. And then at the bottom is just really detailed on the residential dwelling styles. As we did that, it was a fairly involved project that looked simple on the surface, but turned out to be pretty time-consuming when we got into the details of how we'd change the data to go forward. We had to make sure that our sales information for the prior three years was also updated, not just the current record, so that we can continue to do the work that we do with our market modeling. So, if you have any questions. As far as the budget numbers go, there's very little change in our budget, though one main change is just the payroll, indirect and direct change. Otherwise, we're, have basically the same numbers we had the previous years.
Our Tyler Technology tech, who does the commercial, they're, they show up as under contractual services, and they're going up $1,000 based on the proposed option for that particular line item. Staff-wise, everything's staying the same. Mr. Alger was promoted from deputy assessor last year into assessor, so I think he's had a successful 10 months into the job, and will continue with CLT, just doing the commercial, and the rest of his staff doing his residential and personal property.
Yeah, and with the expansion of annexation and brought to the city, anticipate that we'll need possibly some more property appraisers in the future? I'm just kind of crystal ball thing in it. Or a loop?
Yeah.
Right.
We talked about that a little bit, especially when we were talking about facilities.
Yeah.
For planning for facilities in the future.
Yeah, at this point, I think we've been able to manage with the personnel we have, but it's possible that we would need help if we continue to annex and we continue to see development, you know, residentially and commercially. Improved parcels take more time to value than something that's vacant, so...
And I also would think this is kind of a specialty education that people need to have, so the working pool is probably kind of small.
You have to get your certifications and training, and you have to meet certain certifications from Department of Revenue to do the various jobs within the assessors division and move past the highest, the city assessor certification. And move past the highest, the city assessor certification?
It's assessor three certification that's required. If your base value, if your commercial value is a certain, certain value, you have to now have an assessor three and maintain an assessor two certification as well. So you have to have dual, but yes, it's going to require more education as well. And a higher level of education, we may see our education budget has to be increased coming forward. If the Department of Revenue follows through with their education requirements, they're considering increasing those, but they haven't, we've heard that talk for several years now and they haven't followed through, we had budget for it previously for the training necessary, and they continue to reevaluate what they want that to look like. But I'm pretty sure it won't be long and we will have to have more education involved.
I'm sure if the dark story issue gets resolved, that that could come into play as far as education.
Yes.
Something to just think about.
So would that be under conference and training? Because I noticed that that was down for this coming year. So it looks like we're cutting back rather than anticipating expansion.
Yeah, and looking at that, that was why it was increased, was in anticipation of what the Department of Revenue had told us we were going to need to do. So appropriate budgeting, the budget was expanded, they didn't follow through on their part. So we haven't been using all of that training like we anticipated, and we held it and held it, you know, thinking it was going to happen, and we just haven't got there. So it's down slightly, anticipating that it could still happen. We need to be prepared and not have to bring it all in there at once and introduce it new. So we're going to wait and see what they do, but I don't think they're going to give up on it. They seem like they actually do want to increase the training, but it's taking a little bit of time for them to figure out how they want to implement it.
Luke, can you elaborate for a couple of seconds on dwelling style, exactly what is meant by that?
Yeah, it's just simply giving a name to what a property is. A ranch, you know, is a dwelling style. A colonial is a dwelling style. So those are things some people are familiar with. One thing the Department of Revenue wanted to do is they thought that an old style, dwelling style didn't have a whole lot of meaning, so they were trying to put something in place that would clarify that as just an example. Unfortunately, they called it a farmhouse. So most of our older houses are built off of what traditionally be called a farmhouse design. But when you're in a developed city environment, most people don't consider their house to be a farmhouse. So it may be accurate, but I don't know that it really does what they intended for us. So we attached, we included old style to that style to try to give somebody some idea that we're not specifically calling their house a farmhouse, but.
I didn't think we were calling it either.
But, so I, that's just an example, there's a modern one-story or a modern two-story, trying to get, catch up to what some of the current designs are that are out there, that your, what was a ranch yesterday isn't what's being built today with the quality, the size, the architectural design, so.
Reason I say that there should be some coordination between this and the Realtors, because there's, it gets very confusing as to what is, what is what really out in the marketplace. So there would, if you can coordinate, only if you can, between Realtors, Wisconsin Realtors Association for clarification on terminology, that would, I think, be helpful to everyone, but that's kind of a.
Yeah, it is, it is something that, it is difficult in that when we have a style, then there's other typical architectural styles that are all thrown in under one umbrella. And so somebody would tell you, that's not the house I have. And unless you drill down into the detail of the assessor manual, you wouldn't know that it's actually throwing everything under that one dwelling style. So, and the other issue in there is that we're using dwelling style to find comparable properties. And the more that we split it out, the harder it is to use that as a criteria to find comparables. So there are other styles that we chose not to implement here because we don't have a lot of them. And so we would, it would make it life harder and we wouldn't be able to have as consistent of a product. So we like to make sure we're finding comparables that are similar to properties and not just putting in a style on it for the sake of calling it a specific style and having that be more accurate on the surface, but not do what it needs to do underneath when we actually go to value. So there's a little more to it.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I think we can move along to page 241 for weights and measures. Are you?
No, that would be under inspections.
That would be under inspections, can we go right to 133 with economic development?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke.
Weight and measures, probably not Luke.
Right, economic development has a lot of direct ties to the city's strategic plan, both the seventeen and eighteen and the nineteen and twenty. And Ms. Niforth is the Economic Development Services Manager for the City of Oshkosh. And you can see there's a lot of links to the strategic plan, and maybe I can turn it over to you to highlight some of those links to the strategic plan.
Sure, well, obviously, council has made economic development one of the goals, strategic goals in our strategic plan for the past, I think, three or four strategic plans. So we use the strategic plan pretty much as our guidebook for what, you know, our tasks are daily and then our initiatives, what they will be. And then, you know, we have workshops with you, maybe once or twice a year, like the one we just had earlier this month, where we take feedback and, you know, move forward with our tasks, you know, that you were looking for us to accomplish. Some of the more major strategic plan objectives and strategies that we have been working on this past year, first and foremost, making it easier for developers to develop in the city. That's going through the permitting and approval process and just the resources that we can give them to submit plans online, pay with a credit card. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a big deal. We've had a lot of requests from developers, you know, five years ago wanting to do that, and they do have those resources now. So we get a lot of compliments from contractors, from engineers who are able to utilize that, save time, save money, not have to print off ten huge sets of plans, so we appreciate that also. Also, you know, working on promoting the city-owned industrial lots and business lots, it's something that we heard at a workshop earlier this month with just putting up signs. So staff is investigating how much would each sign cost, how much would a billboard cost, and looking at our budget to see if that's something that we could potentially still do this year. And working with GoEDC continuously on, you know, promoting, we're signs, websites, flyers, trade shows, regional magazines, looking at niche markets, especially now with rail and aviation. We kind of had two niche industrial parks that have, that might interest some folks that are in more the aviation and rail sectors. As I mentioned with GoEDC, we work with them on a daily basis. It's something that we really lean on each other to grow economic development here in our community. So the city does our job by maintaining our municipal data, making sure all of our records are up to date. So when we get that RFP, we are ready to give them that information. They need to turn that around, sometimes within less than twenty-four hours. And also, if we have businesses that are interested in lots, sometimes their engineers reach out to us, and that's where economic development leans on our Public Works Department, specifically our Engineering Division. And they help give us the information we need for those folks to make a decision if they would like to pursue that lot. Quality of life is something that the city works with Mayor Cummings on and promotes and works with Greater Oshkosh on also. And also, I mentioned industrial lots, but redevelop lots, you know, in our redevelopment areas, specifically the Sawdust District with our Imagine Oshkosh Plan. We're working on central, or Sawdust District Master Plan, so it's really digging down a little bit deeper than the Imagine Oshkosh Plan did. And we have a great stakeholder group of business owners, a few elected officials that contribute to that group, and I think we're going to have some great recommendations that come from it. And continuously looking for grants for that area, talking to state, federal agencies, and working on sending out RFPs to gather interest in those areas. I mentioned grants, we pretty much look at grants continuously all the time. Our divisions have been very successful getting grants between Mr. Davis, myself, Ms. Brandt. We really are able to get, you know, a couple of grants, have a couple ideas of grants for projects and usually are able to at least get one. So this year specifically, we were able to get a DOT grant for the work on Oshkosh Ave for the Lake Shore redevelopment. And then obviously, the River Walk we had just announced a couple of weeks ago, so it's very exciting. And then another thing is the corridor planning. We work with Planning, Public Works and Transportation on, and that's something that, and I know, I think in the next strategic plan, the one that you guys just adopted, that's something that's going to be important to improve our corridors, get those connections from I-41 down to the Central City, and just to continue to implement recommendations from there. Was there anything else, Alan, that I missed?
That sounds good.
Okay. If you want to go, if we want to talk about some significant accomplishments from this past year, a lot of work on the Oshkosh Arena project, still working on it to hopefully close that property out and transfer it over, demolishing Blight Properties. As I mentioned before, receiving grants to help businesses grow in the community or else help offset public infrastructure costs. We work with many developers and businesses throughout this community when they come in. So we kind of have, we call it account management, where we each have certain accounts where we try to keep up with businesses, if it's just not an email, hey, how it's going? I haven't heard from you lately, or you see them at a business after hours or something, just to keep in contact, and GoEDC also does that, same sort of kind of relationship building. And also, closing out projects, our division works with inspections a lot to make sure as development projects are going through the city process that they're getting all the plans they needed approved. Sometimes they maybe forget to get their HVAC plan or something, and some, our department sometimes reaches out to the contractor and say, hey, just remember, you need this, just so it doesn't hold them up at the end. Sometimes those surprises come at the end, so we try to limit that sort of risk for them and helping them get through the occupancy permit all the way through, and sometimes even thereafter. We continue to work on promotional materials, like I said, we work with Greater Oshkosh a lot on that. So I know they had shared some with you at that workshop, very good partner with that. And then, you know, from a city standpoint, we have a website, developoshkosh.com, that we use to send, if people want a listing of all our properties, it's just an easy website to send. And then also, that's our online portal, if folks are looking to submit something online, we can just send them to there and all the directions are there, and they can submit and pay for what they need to online. Still looking to send out proposals, RFPs for some of our RDA properties on the South Shore specifically and in the Marion Road area if we would need to. And we, as we get grants, we have to close them out, so we work on closing out grants throughout the year. And sometimes grants, they go through only a certain timeframe, so there's a couple of those in here too. And the big one is the transload facility, you've been hearing a lot about it. That's been a big project for us lately. It was a big project to try to get that grant going, but now that we have it, a lot of people are very interested in it. So it's very exciting for our community, but it's taking a lot of coordination on staff's part, specifically economic development and our Engineering Department. So we've been working together with Public Works on that one, and we're pretty, I guess, certain in the next year, so we're going to see some lots being sold in the area and some development in that area, which will be great, just to see some movement north of the tracks and see the transload being utilized. I'm told the Oshkosh Corporation is going to start ramping up their deliveries using the transload in early 2019. So it's going to be a busy area out there, and I'm hearing that if the properties that are sold that we're hearing might be, and they are developed, there'll be over ten thousand trucks each day, you know, using, in and out of there, so, or year.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Alan caught me there.
But that does lead, when we get to our capital improvement program, that's still a gravel road out there, so we'll talk about that at some point.
Sure, and continues, we're still trying to sell industrial lots. We talked a lot about that at our workshop. And, you know, we, as we're doing business retention visits, our account management, we always know which properties we have for sale and which, you know, ones we could offer other folks to potentially expand on. We're seeing more and more businesses expanding on their own site, they're maximizing their site that they have, adding on or else, you know, doing some lean, you know, processes where they're kind of refiguring their existing building. And I guess, moving on, is there any other accomplishments you think we should cover?
I see the last one is to complete the DOD grant for the aviation cluster. Just as a reminder, we've worked with GoEDC, the university, and Angels on the Water to create funding, to create an education program, to develop workforce. And hopefully, that would carry through to EAA 2019. GoEDC mentioned a little bit about that, where they had a talent takeoff there at the Menominee Arena, I want to say February or March of this year, and then again at EAA. And that was a grant that we ran through DOD for those activities. And we're looking at ways to sustain that type of activity when it comes to talent upload, talent takeoff, I'm sorry, and further education in the aviation area. So that grant will end, but I think a lot of the activities will continue.
So if I could just ask a question regarding the, the RFP on East Seventh Street in relation to the Sawdust District Master Planning. What timeframe are we looking at getting at least a draft of that Sawdust District Master?
I believe, maybe, staff is working on it internally. And it was a decision, do we send it out to a consultant to do it, or do we do it internally? And we decided to do it internally, so we're having monthly meetings. But we feel it's a better experience just because we have those stakeholders. They're more apt to come to meet with city staff rather than a consultant. And we're getting great feedback, but we're going through it as fast as staff can, which is usually monthly meetings. So I think we're hoping by early 2019, would that be fair, Darren?
End of first quarter.
End of first quarter, okay.
So would you say that because we don't quite have that master plan theme at least developed, that that would have, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that would have had anything to do with why we didn't really get any return on that RFP for Seventh Avenue?
I would agree with that, and also just some of the uncertainties around there with Pioneer Drive, the Pioneer Inn property, if you, if you know that there's a little strip of Pioneer Inn property that actually goes just north of that RDA property. So we have received many calls from consultants, I mean, in the state and even outside of the state that were interested, but they're a little nervous to pull the trigger on something where they're not quite sure what's going to be right next to them. So I totally agree where they were coming from, and I think once we work out through some of those issues and get that master plan in place too, that will really help guide developers to, you know, show exactly what we want to see in that area.
So with that being listed as a significant accomplishment for sending out that RFP, how much time would you say was spent on that? And what did we learn or what did we gain from that process?
Probably hundreds of hours, got it all together, to create and then respond to all the questions as time went by. And then what we learned was we were, we still need to remove some of the uncertainty surrounding that area. And Ms. Niforth mentioned the plan specifically for redevelopment, some of the infrastructure we have to work out still, as well as the strip of land that the Pioneer Drive is on is actually owned by CN. We're trying to obtain that property. And then the strip of land that Decade owns, we're hoping that Mr. Dumkey can eventually get that property. And we at least need Ninth Avenue to go through that property to get over to the Pioneer Island portion. And then what is planned for that strip of land? Nothing is certain at this point in time, and I think developers don't like a lot of uncertainty. They'd like to know what their neighbors are going to be and where the improvements are going to be, even where is the River Walk going to be built? Because at this point in time, since we don't control the land, I can't guarantee we're even going to build the River Walk.
But that being said, we have a great, you know, template now that we can use the next time we send out RFP. Obviously, we'll update some of the information in there, but kind of the bones of the RFP are there. So we're looking forward to hopefully getting some of those issues figured out and sending it out again.
Reinforce what they've said, from people I've talked to, it is the unknown of what can you do? Can you build on Keene Island? What's underneath there, we've talked about, we're going to have to do some drilling to find out what is in. It's a landfill. And I kind of know what went there fifty years ago, but is it billable by DNR standards now? How much room is there really to build something that would, that would cash flow? That was another discussion. Pioneer Drive along the river, that was once a huge warehouse, you know, so we don't know quite what's there. So it's, it's a huge piece of property, that is, there's a lot of unknowns in the community about what, what we can and cannot do with that property, or what a developer can or cannot do with that property.
I was going to say, is there anything else, one over the APIs or?
No, about objectives for next year.
Sure, looking ahead to next year, we would like to continue with the Oshkosh Corporation Global Headquarters and Oshkosh Avenue redevelopment to make sure that all of our public infrastructure is installed on time, that we're meeting our obligations set forth in the development agreement with Oshkosh Corporation. And then working with any of the developers on Long Oshkosh Ave, Keller Street, Rath Lane that are looking to redevelop in that area. River Walk, as you heard, we received another River Walk grant, so that would be over by Lake Shore, connecting the Tribal Heritage Trail by forty-one there, and then over to. connecting the Tribal Heritage Trail by 41 there, and then over to Rainbow Park. And looking at continuously working with our inspections divisions, planning department division, and also our private development community on identifying any processes that we could put in place that might help, you know, the approval and permitting process for them. And, and these are all items too that are included in the next, the strategic plan that was recently approved. So continuing to work with Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation, promoting the transload facilities. We talked about that a little bit more. That will be a really big project for us in 2019. And with that, that kind of, we'll be marketing those city-owned lots up there by the transload facility, but at the same time continuing with aviation, our property that we own up in the Northwest Industrial Park and the other remaining lots in the Southwest Industrial Park, south of the railroad track. And we have, you know, continuing to work with the businesses, our account management, reaching out to them during projects, after projects, just to keep up with what they're working on, if there's anything the city can help out with. And we can, we'll continue to report on our economic development KPIs. Grants will continue to be a big part of our, our tasks for next year. Probably looking at a WDC CDI or IDLE grant, we can apply for one a year. We've been pretty successful with getting those. Those are typically in, the CDI grants are in the central cities, so we actually are working with a few people right now that are interested in potentially applying for one. So city staff will apply for them on their behalf. That's the rules the city has to apply. So looking at anything that can help with that central city growth. Along with central city, I'll also mention the opportunity zones that were just designated by the US government. We are working on that. We're learning a little bit about them ourselves, but we are working with developers. We have a lot of developers that are very interested in developing in those districts. So we're very fortunate, part of the Sawdust District is in an opportunity zone. And then kind of north by, well, right where we're sitting right here is in an opportunity zone where Marion Road is and part of the college, part of our downtown area. So we're, we're very excited to offer another tool, you know, that we can hopefully entice and attract more developers to the area.
So Kelly, on that, so you said a lot of developers are asking and interested in doing development in those zones. Any indication as to what kind of development?
Well, I, I think Opportunity Zone has some guidelines as far as what they can do. We've heard a lot of mixed use. A little bit of commercial, but it's, I don't believe it can be straight residential. I'd have to double check. But a lot of mixed use is what we're hearing, especially along the riverfront, which is something that our new comprehensive plan, you know, that's what we want to push for in that area.
And along Main Street.
And along Main Street too, yep.
Also throw in that we have a meeting later today with a representative from EDA regarding potential grant application for the Southwest Industrial Park. So we're always searching for additional grant funds to help with our capital improvements. That's not even on our list right now, but it's something that's come about in the last couple of weeks. Then we have quite a few key performance measures regarding everything that Ms. Knifworth talked about, about making the process easier and quicker. Time is still money on the economic development, business development side. We're always looking to decrease the time, and I'll throw in one little comment. The engineers here at the City of Oshkosh can be stretched when it comes to responding to economic development projects and doing their regular work. We, we depend on them to get us answers on sewer, water, street, infrastructure issues that developers need to, need to know, so the, the quicker we can turn that around from an engineering standpoint, the better it'll help the city. Then the, creating and implement the economic development plan, we heard quite a bit about what we're doing on the aviation, rail, and general marketing that we've done on economic development. On our funding sources, we continuously improve our situation with the tax increment finance policy, which we updated. The RLF and the capital catalyst, which WDC administers on our behalf for the city. And that's the one that recently was awarded additional money from WDC for entrepreneurship in the city. Part grant program from WDC and loan, and it's all loan money from the city's funding. And just to chime in, a few items on the riverfront and redevelopment sites. We always strive to complete a Riverwalk section each year. We finished the one at Morgan District this year, assuming the light fixtures get in, delivered and installed in the next month. We can't control when the light fixtures arrive unfortunately, but for 2019, we'll be doing Lake Shore. 2020, I'm hoping to be able to do the Riverwalk between Main Street and the river, the railroad tracks, which is Pioneer Drive, and then back out to Rainbow Memorial Park to use the TAP grant funds that we got for construction in 2021. And then acquisition and demolition of some of the blighted properties, you'll see in our CIP, several properties that we have, would like to remove there at the end of Sawyer and Oshkosh Ave. We have two buildings to take down. We have rec lanes and a couple other buildings in the South Shore to take down, and that all needs to be budgeted with the CIP. But we always have a target to take down two or three properties every year to remove those blighted properties. And as you can see, the account management, we started with 50 account management clients, and now we've increased that to 75, and as time has gone by, city staff is doing more and more of that work when it comes to account management. And we heard it loud and clear that we want to sell more industrial and aviation and railroad land. So fortunately, we have quite a few interested buyers in that, so we're hoping in 2019 you'll see quite a few more acres being sold.
Question on that, Alan. So up in the objectives to be accomplished for next year, it has engaged 75 businesses and developers in the city. But then under the KPIs, for 2017, we had 90 actual. So you were above target, but then, I'm sorry, what, what was the expectation for 2018, 2019? Does it go back down to 75?
It goes back down to 75.
It's a lot of it's project-based, so it kind of ebbs and flows. If we have a product, a developer that's doing like six projects here, you know, I mean, we're talking to him six times, but we're not talking to five other developers. So we can always get typically 75, but lately it's just gone up every year that we've just been doing more and more. So we just, you know, keep it in as of that.
And a few years ago, we started with 50, so we keep raising the bar, from my perspective, as we get better and better at this. And then as far as the line items on the budget, not sure there's anything significant to highlight for you. Is there anything?
Actually, under contractual services, so looks like we're doubling contractual service from 10 to 20,000.
Actually, we, we budgeted 25, but we're only spending 10 this year. So we're looking at actually decreasing our budget from 25 down to 20.
I see, okay. But then we also have the miscellaneous contractual services at 105. So can you just explain the difference or distinction?
Yes, the 105 is our contribution, our investment to Greater Oshkosh EDC. And the top one is for when we need the contractual services, when we need a special consultant, either wetland or environmental or engineering or architectural work that we need done for a particular economic development project.
Just a comment, Alan. You know, we, we've purchased a lot of property the last few years the city has.
For redevelopment.
Redevelopment and that. Sometimes I hear from citizens that, why don't we tear them down when we take them so they don't become an ice ore? And I know we do the, you know, it's a little different when we do the residential buying, because that's under a whole different program, but I kind of have to agree with that. You know, when you look at, and you mentioned the rec lanes, and you look at that area, where you get over on the Rainbow Park area, some of those properties that we've purchased for future development are starting to look pretty, pretty sad.
Yes, and I apologize.
And I know we don't want to stick money into them to keep them kind of up, but we're asking our citizens to keep their homes looking good, and we're asking our rental people to upgrade their properties, I think we as a city have to take a lead on some of our city-owned facilities and either get them down, or if we have to improve them a little bit to comply, then we should do that.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because we did increase our capital improvement request for demolition. Went from about 200,000 to 400,000 dollars, so we can actually do more of those blight removals. In 2017, we were caught a little bit in that we took all that money and put it for the Buckstaff property, so we kind of created our own problem with that. But now I think we can get back on track and start taking those blighted buildings down the same year we acquire them, assuming we can get through the asbestos and the remediation.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot to it. I mean, these are older structures and there's issues to them, but.
There's always issues, unfortunately.
It, it, it just, again, we own them, and we got to lead by example.
And I think that's, that's exactly why we try to, once we do tear them down, we do like to maintain them with the grass.
Yeah, and that's fine until we get something in there.
It's an attractive parcel until it gets redeveloped, so I completely agree with that.
Okay. I think for time, we should move on to our next budget, maybe, Alan?
Did we talk anything about CIP projects at this point?
When you, when you're done with all of your operating, then it'd be appropriate.
Then you're going to have to hang around.
Yeah. Don't go too far, Kelly.
That would lead us to page 137, the planning division. There is a budget enhancement for this division, I believe, Alan. And so I don't know if you want to lead off with that, or if you want to do the high overview of the operations.
Let's see, I'd be happy to lead off with the budget enhancements, since that's a new topic. Everybody should have had a sheet with budget enhancements, and there's two of them on there from community development. The first one is planning the corridor plan for Jackson Street. And to describe that, we were looking at a corridor plan for all four of our major corridors coming into the city, South Park and Ninth. We did last year. The Oshkosh Ave, we did as part of the Oshkosh Ave project and Oshkosh Corp. And now we're looking at Jackson Street. And if you recall, we were looking at two different parts of that corridor. There's the, the entry from I-41 South until you get to Murdoch, and then once you get to Murdoch, it's more of a traffic safety for that neighborhood type of project. So this piece is from Murdoch North up to I-41. It's kind of the, what we originally imagined as a corridor. What can we do with land uses and improvements in that corridor to make it more attractive, make it more user-friendly, make it more redevelopment-friendly? Whereas south of Murdoch, it's more related to the neighborhood, and we've actually allocated funds from great neighborhoods to do more of the safety examination in that corridor. This is the area north of Murdoch that would lead right into that neighborhood. And maybe you could describe a little bit more about the budget enhancement that we're talking about for the Jackson Street project.
Sure, that, that would be a budget enhancement to allow us to move forward with the corridor plan. We would hire a consultant to, to move forward, like similar to what we did with Ninth and South Park, the area from Murdoch North to about 41. There's a lot of development opportunities along that zone, because a lot of it's undeveloped, a lot of it's still in the town. So we think that being able to put together a plan that would have a land use framework, a transportation framework, would be a good thing for the future, because we are going to start, we get sporadic development interest along there, and that will be another good corridor at some point that will need to, that will get developed. So we are trying to be a little bit proactive on that. So we put, we did put in for that, or request that, that enhancement.
Darren, do you think that, that plan will result in something similar to the Ninth and South Park corridor plans? Or are we, is it the vision that they would all look similar as a gateway? Or would they have kind of their own distinct kind of personality, if you will?
I think they're, if you look at the Ninth and South Park corridors, those are generally old urban industrial corridors. The Jackson one, that is more of a suburban one, so everything's been developed, you know, in that Jackson corridor post-war. So it's not the, you don't have the small lot development in that area, so I think it's going to have a different flavor.
Plus, it's got some agricultural up in the town too, so I mean, there's still.
We have to deal with that.
Farms with cows sitting up there as well, so it'd be interesting to see what kind of coalescence can come around there.
Plus, we don't have a land use agreement with the town of Oshkosh, do we?
We do not.
Excellent point. And they don't want one.
Well, their idea of what they want in the plan and our idea are two different things at this point.
We're moving closer though, aren't we?
I hope so. We, we continue to have discussions with them. And frankly, yeah, we, we are, I mean, during our comprehensive plan update process, Jim Erdman, we, we worked closely with them to try and mirror as much of their, or put as much of their land use plan as part of ours, so we wouldn't be in conflict. So we worked relatively close with them. I think there's still those infill properties in the, you know, kind of our core that I think at some point need to transition and become part of the city of Oshkosh, but.
It has to be a compatible look and feel as you enter the city, because I, you're driving, I don't know where the town is. I'm just driving in Oshkosh.
You don't have sidewalks. The sidewalks have been a man, a real big issue, and we can't get them, you know, we've talked to them about trying to get them to install sidewalks or have a sidewalk installation policy. And that's just not, right now, that's not in the cards.
There's real safety issues there, sure. But it might be kind of challenging to bring together that kind of agricultural with that. I mean, there's a beautiful new, modern, urban building there, the Aquatic Center or Aquarium Center.
That's a rehab. No, that was branded.
It was tear down.
Yep, they originally were going to rehab it and it was a tear down. Yeah, it's a nice looking building.
But it's like, one property's in the city and one's in the town, and that, that really creates, creates a lot of issues.
So from a, from a work standpoint, well, from last year's accomplishments, of course, we've done, we did a couple TIFF plans for 34 and 35, which was Oshkosh Avenue and, and Oshkosh Corp. We received that, kind of that prestigious award from ESRI for the visualization of the global headquarters, and we're really proud of that. We reviewed a lot of items through our boards and commissions, and we'll get to that in a minute, 419 items. That was a lot of, that's a lot of meetings, it's a lot of staff time to prep each of those meetings, adopt those corridor plans, adopt the River East Neighborhood Plan. That, that quality of life, that neighborhood quality of life tool, we continue to refine that and work on that, because I think that, that map with respect to the strategic plan, the council strategic plan to strengthening neighborhoods, we are going, we, I think we have a lot of, we'll have a lot of use of that map, because it's a very good planning tool, and we continue to refine it. Commenced work on the Sawdust District Plan, and I'm hoping to, because we're doing that one in-house, it takes us a little bit longer. We, the, our planning and zoning function, our planning function is, is in two areas. It's long-range planning and current planning. Current planning is all those things that you're seeing every other week. You're seeing the conditional use permits, the zone changes, land divisions, subdivision flats. That, anything's done in zero to five years, that's current planning. That's the lion's share of our work, and that's what takes the most time. Long-range planning, I don't have personnel dedicated to long-range planning, so it's, it's when we have time to get something done, to work on the plan, that's, that, that's when we can devote some of that time, and we're going to get to that in a minute. So I don't really have a, a long-range plan. We all kind of, a long-range planner, we all kind of work on that. So we got that. And adopt comprehensive plan update. As far as next year, this little sheet that I, that I handed out to you, this kind of shows what we want to kind of work on for, what's either under development right now or we're working on next year. First, I wanted to get to, we, we do, we do provide staff support to eight, eight boards and commissions. Thank you, give them at least, did I have? As scheduled right now, that's about 96, that's about 96 meetings. The lion's share, a lot of that work comes through the plan commission. So we have 20, we have two of those meetings scheduled a month, and each of these boards and commissions has a, a staff liaison. So you can see plan commission, board of appeals, landmarks, sustainability, bike and pedestrian, public arts and beautification, the business improvement district, then extraterritorial zoning, that's done as needed. We don't meet that often. And then outside of that, we have the development and review committee. Anytime somebody comes in here with a major building permit, commercial, industrial, multiple family, we have two meetings a month to move that through the process. Plans under, or to be developed, Menominee South, hopefully, we're, we're still hoping to get you the Menominee South master, or neighborhood plan this fall. Sawdust District, again, we're working hard to get that done, and we'll be meeting, we're going to, we're going to set up individual stakeholder interviews this fall yet, which will, which will involve each of you. We want to sit down with you to get your thoughts. We've, we've started to coalesce and, and about, around land use in that area and what we think things should be looking like. We want to bounce that off you. And we did create, we, we put in a newsletter article on this, but we did create a webpage for the Sawdust District, so you can see what's going on, what meetings, what the boundaries, the tentative boundaries look like, because nothing's been adopted at this point. We're currently working on a public arts plan. We're hoping to get that done by March. So Alex is working hard on that, and that will, that'll allow us to start having a strategic plan kind of for how we want public arts to be in the community. Bike and Ped, that's currently in an update process. That's about a five-year update. We just are starting the historic preservation plan, so we're, Stephen's working hard on that one. Sustainability Plan Update, working on that. Jackson Street Safety Study, of course, we got the money from the CIP for that, and we're looking to. course, we got the money from the CIP for that, and we're looking to develop a potential RFP, but we want to do it, depending on what's happening with that enhancement that were requested, we may, if we grant us the enhancement, we might fold that into the corridor plan, because we might get a better, we think we might get a better number on that from a consultant. We just met this last week with East Central. We were awarded some technical assistance from them to help work on a railroad mitigation plan as it goes through the community.
What would that encompass, the railroad?
Right now, we're looking at the corridor from about 17th all the way up to probably New York, somewhere in that. So you've got the Sawdust District. There was a recommendation of the Imagine Oshkosh Plan that we should look at. Is there a way that we can soften that corridor as it's coming through town? So what we're looking at is what techniques can we do? How can we make that a better-looking corridor? So we just, we just sat down. Right now, we're inventorying the corridor.
Or buffer the corridor.
Or buffer the corridor softening, yeah. So we're looking, we might not have a lot of options, and the railroad is not always.
Easy to work with.
So we're hoping.
Home move and train.
We're hoping that something develops out of that. And then what we're also trying to do is we're trying to, we're finishing up the Monomie South Neighborhood Plan. We're hoping to get some interest in another neighborhood to get another neighborhood plan, but we don't have that interest yet. We have to have them come to us. We work with them to try and nurture them to get us to want to do a plan, but we don't have them yet. And there's some need to be freshening up. Middle Village should probably be freshened up, because it's about five years old, I think, somewhere. So we've got to start, after you get about five years, you should look and update them.
Is there, I did notice that Sacred Heart is launching their public meetings addressing the Rock to Block. Has there been any thought that since that goal or item was placed in their action items to actually do a neighborhood plan there? Are they not ripe for that?
They're pretty new. I'm not saying they're not ripe, but I guess we haven't sat down with them, talked to them about it. The Rock to Block would probably be an opportunity, but I think that's what's taking up some of their leadership's time, is to get people to want to do that Rock to Block. But that's, we can put that on docket to talk to that neighborhood about, because we, I think we have neighborhood meetings coming up this next month.
Member.
Yeah. Ordinance updates, one of the, when we talked about the corridor plans that have got adopted, a few years back, we worked with the county to rewrite their air zone, and their air zone in its current format. It overprotects the airport to the detriment of development around the airport, so it's holding back some of that. So we want to, we want to RFQ and work with a consultant this fall yet to hopefully start the process to update that, to update their code. I think, when the county staff is generally on board, they just don't, there's no incentive for them to rewrite it. There is an incentive for us to rewrite that code, because it does hold things back. Signage, as you know, we adopted a new zoning ordinance as of January 1, 2017. There, you know, we're finding little nuances and things that we need to adjust, because it was a major update. We're starting the process of adjusting some of the sign regs right now, and we're going to be working on that this fall. Subdivision regs, that was another thing that we got technical assistance from through East Central, so we're going to start the process of updating our subdivision regs. Our subdivision regs comprehensively have not been updated since I've been here, since like 96. So it's time. We're not doing a lot of subdivision planning, fortunately, but we need to get that updated. Flood Storage District and FEMA mapping, that is going to, we're kicking that off this fall. All those improvements that we've done in our watersheds have effect, or in the watershed, Sora Creek specifically, that has improved the flood, the floodplain situation in that area. There's a lot, so people have come out of the floodplain. We've got to get that remapped. In order to remap that, in order to implement the floodplain, the new floodplain, we have to actually map some floodplain storage districts, and we're going to be looking at doing that this fall. And we have to work with the county, because a lot of the flood storage districts are going to have to be mapped in the town. So we're working closely. We're going to have some neighborhood meetings coming up with that yet this fall. Historic Preservation Ordinance, we have, we have a Historic Preservation Ordinance. It's rather weak from a preservation standpoint. It doesn't do a heck of a lot to preserve, so we'd like to look at potentially putting, strengthening that up in certain areas. Zoning Enforcement, we do all the zoning enforcement in the community. I don't have dedicated code enforcement personnel, so it's, when we do, when we do our inspections, it's when they have time to get out and do inspections. From a proactive zoning standpoint, we did about 2,000 properties. We're trying to get through the whole, the whole city. We thought we could do it in five years, but even with two personnel, when they can get around to doing it, we did about 2,000 last year. We've got about 23,000 properties in the city, so it's a task. Other things, Rock to Block, of course, we're spending a lot of time working with GOHNI and Habitat to try and get that done. We are working on our new micro grant program, micro curb appeal, micro grant, that we'd like to kind of unveil with that particular program, with that thing. William Waters Plaza, that was part of the great neighborhoods. That will be done as part of that Washington Street reconstruction, and I think that's going to be a real cool area. There's Streetscape Plan, another CIP problem, project. Housing programs, we administer the Sold on Oshkosh, which is a homebuyer program, curb appeal loan, curb appeal micro grant, owner occupied rehab, rental rehab, and then we also want to create a historic rehab loan program, hopefully next year. Working on a housing and housing site and grading system, kind of like where we have a Pacer rating for streets, we want to have a housing and site grading system for blocks and houses. So we want to be able to index each block, so we can, we'll go out and do an inspection on each site, and then each will get a score, and then we'll be able to see what that score looks like at any one time. So if we're having issues with, you know, some part of the facade, we can design a program, and we know that we can go into this area and what it looks like. Green Infrastructure Audit, we're working, Public Works, and Stephen is working to look at our codes, to see what we can do to improve them, to get at that green infrastructure kind of ideal. Tap Grant, that's for the Rainbow Park Riverwalk construction, working hard on that. And then we work pretty hard, we work closely with GOHNI Coordination and with the One Oshkosh Plan. Lastly, every time we adopt a plan, there's implementation, and that's probably, you know, we can adopt all the plans in the world, but if we don't implement them, they're not very effective. Each of those plans has a number of items that need implementation. That's another thing, that every time we adopt a plan, there's something that needs to get done as part of that plan. We do a lot, a lot of that falls heavy on Community Development staff, so, you know, as part of it, we're looking at council's strategic stuff, and all that neighborhood planning that we're doing. Imagine Oshkosh, I think there's 150-plus recommendations in there. The Corridors Plan, Comprehensive Plan, all these plans have some corresponding implementation items. We work hardly, hard on those.
Can I add a couple of things?
Sure.
That you've done.
Oh.
You know, Alexa was very involved in the Lake Flight Art Project.
Forgot about that, yes.
That took a lot of her time working with me and the other sponsors. She was, she's also working with me on the Chief Oshkosh signage for Monomie Park. We've traveled to Kachina, meet with the tribal leaders. We're now working with historians at the university to, she's helping write, rewrite the copy. You know, Stephen's been very involved in the markers for the church, Irving Historic District, the marker for Main Street.
Recently went up, correct.
That took a lot of time and research. He's also involved in the research and helping people get their businesses and homeowners get the historic signs on their homes. So they're doing a lot of stuff, I guess I've kind of asked them to help with, but they're very time-consuming, but I think they're very important to what we're doing in the community, so.
Yes, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a dedicated preservation planner, so that's another one that Steve, Stephen works hard on that.
He does. We're getting close.
Stephen does a very good job.
I just want to ask one thing. When we were talking about the in-house work on the Sawdust District Plan.
Correct.
You know, not having those personnel really dedicated to long-range planning. I think in the past, we've talked a little bit about, you know, what some of the opportunities are in terms of using the UW, like UW Milwaukee's, you know, graduate students and/or the Quest Program through UW Oshkosh, maybe in relation to some of these other kind of implementation pieces. Where are we at in terms of working with our university system and students? And I realize that it takes supervision there, but just curious, you know, are we, how are we doing on that?
Right now, we're working with one intern that's shared between us and Public Works, and that intern is helping us with the Sawdust District Plan, doing some inventorying for us. They're doing a lot of the GIS inventory for us, and they're also working with us on, she's also defining the railroad corridor for that plan. When UW Oshkosh, they went away from their planning program. When we went away from their planning program, we lost a lot of that connection from the planning standpoint, so we haven't really circled back to them. We were trying to, we were trying to work with them, with our Public Affairs Department on the Rock to Block thing, but then the issue, there's been some issues that Habitat's had some turnover with their leadership, so we haven't been able to get their students out. But we do, we do work with Alexa and Stephen, I think, work with their students over there as part of the neighborhood planning. They'll do some, they'll do some neighborhood inspections and things like that. Could we work more closely with them? Probably.
Well, I mean, there's a significant, there's like thousands of students who have these Quest Program-like requirements, and that's why I kind of bring that up, that I believe there's a dedicated engagement coordinator or something like that over there for those Quest requirements, which require them to do work in the community for X number of hours to get their credits. So, you know, that, I'm pretty sure it's called the Quest Program.
That one, that one we've not worked with. We'll look into that.
Yeah.
But you're right.
I believe Mike Leader is the person.
Mike is? Yeah, we worked with, we were, I know Alexa was working, talking to Mike about something with, because he's got a class coming through, that there were, the students were looking for a project, and we were working with them on that. It was something related to neighborhoods. Alexa's working direct with them, but we'll reach out to them. But you're right, interns take supervision, and they take, you have to have a place for them. And those are things that are at a premium right now, right now in my department, but.
And maybe that's an opportunity to even hook them up with GOHNI or.
Correct. I'd love to get, and I'd love, I'd love to get, I wish, you know, UWM was closer, because then, then we could, when we were going through the program down there, they, we did projects in the local community, but that was because it was close.
I do know that I reached out to their director, Carolyn.
Esseline?
Esseline. And, you know, it's a minimal investment, and that's a great, that Sawdust District Plan is just a great opportunity. It may be too late for their planning purposes, but that would be a great opportunity for a grad student or two, you know, to have a little resume builder to be part of that.
That's a good idea.
She didn't seem to think that the distance would be prohibitive, but that was over a year ago that discussion was started, so.
That's a good, no, that's a good idea. I should circle back to them, saying I'm a alum, too.
Is it CDS, Community Design Services or something? They may have changed their name.
CDI? No.
Something like that.
That's a goal of the Chancellor, to get more students involved in the community, so.
As far as my budget, if you look at last year, I'm going up $4,800 from last year. My year-end estimates, I'm coming in under budget from last year, and that's, a lot of that is because of staffing, personnel. I've had some retirement, I've had a retirement, and I've gone, and we've had some, changed principal planners twice now, or two planners twice, so a lot of that is a function of my staffing stability. Not much is really being proposed as different from the previous year.
At what point do we talk about CDBG or Healthy Neighborhoods?
We're set to continue on. I think those are in the latter half of the budgets. So if you're done with planning, should we continue on, Ellen?
The enhancement part, do you feel?
I think we explained it. I'm hoping it makes sense to combine those two studies together in one quarter, because I think we can get a better proposal from a consultant to do the job.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, I didn't talk about it in my introductory area. Anything that is not in the base budget that's being proposed is listed as an enhancement. We're about, we're still about $300,000, maybe a little more now, $300,000 under our expenditure restraint limit. So anything on page 13, and we gave you a revised page 13 with some updated numbers, but one of them includes that corridor plan for Jackson Street. That's not in the base budget right now. So to the degree council wants to consider those enhancements, they're on page 13, and every department will have their chance to discuss that. So if, Ellen, if there's anything, I think now would be the appropriate time for those. But the, we have $300,000 in spending capacity. That's on the expenditure restraint side. That's sort of the good news. The bad news is that they're not funded, and that would have to come from additional property tax, and we're already at 1050, albeit about a nickel less than what we had last year, but it's still an increase in the tax. So that's the downside. So every department is going to be making their pitch for their various ones. So, Ellen, I didn't want to miss on your opportunity, although, Steve, did you have a question?
Well, I was just going to say, where is the funding going to come from? You just took care of that.
No, I answered. I don't know if I took care of it.
Well, I guess, when you have all these enhancements, money's got to come from somewhere, so.
Correct.
And I guess what is the plan of attack, because I don't think we can implement them all. So, are there, I mean, I agree with what Ellen is saying. I think it makes sense to tie in the two Jackson Street plans into one, because it affects, you know, that's a corridor anyways, and it affects a lot of things that the neighborhoods are concerned about. You know, the speeds in that area and traffic congestion and all of that. So if we enhance Jackson Street on the outskirts coming in, that's going to affect their neighborhood too. So I think it makes sense to put those two together.
One question I have for Ellen, and this goes back to the Kenny Island property. You know, we talked during the last Sawdust District meeting about, is that property buildable? You said that we probably should do some drilling to find out what really is there and so forth. And I think you said it might be 30,000, was it 30,000, somewhere in that range?
That's what the typical geotechnical work we've gotten done over the years, although and keep in mind, we don't have permission to go onto that island at this point in time. We don't own it. We'd have to get permission to do something like that, but maybe the prospective buyer would be interested in something like that.
Is that something we should put in an enhancement that if we get the permission to really find out what's there?
Was it on to us, or is it on to the developer to really find it? We're not developing it.
I could contact the developer and see if that's something that they'd want us to do, because if we do it, there's a different kind of public record that's created rather than if they do it. So I don't want to speak for the developer at this point in time, but I'd want to coordinate that very closely with them. 303. 303, Community Development Block Grant. The good news is, we've gotten a little bit more money over the last couple of years, so we've been able to do more projects, and we're still planning on using all of our repayments that come through first before we can get the new money that's allocated. So it's always a challenge for city staff to make sure we get enough projects that meet the criteria for block grant funds. On page 303.
I guess I'm a little confused about that. So we say we have a really long list of implementation items, and we have kind of a backlog of unused CDBG. I'm assuming at least a percentage of those implementation pieces could potentially be under CDBG, but is it more the staffing issue of linking the to-do items with the funding to do on that? Is that where we're?
I think it's a function of matching the block grant requirements with what we want to do, because block grant comes with federal strings.
Restrictions.
And what we've found that is kind of the catch-all is that the acquisition and demolition with block grant funds with the residential properties, that's where the money was going to if we need to, so we can take care of properties for blight removal in neighborhoods with block grant funds, and we've been very effective with that. That doesn't even count the other areas we could be doing block grant-related projects, but in the neighborhoods, acquiring and demolishing blighted properties is one of my favorite activities, is block grant.
Sure.
So that's where we've been using a lot of non-CIP dollars to do that type of activity. And I'll throw in a plug to Public Works. When they can tear down a house and the block grant can pay the tipping fees, that is a great benefit to the city, because it gets the demolition done even cheaper than if we had to bid it out.
I did have a question from a citizen asking where in the budget they could look at. I did have a question from a citizen asking where in the budget they could look at any dollars that are attributed or going towards addressing homelessness for the community, I don't know.
The only place we actually get that is with our regular block grant program, which is 321. That's where we actually put the public services money in, that's the new funds. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've funded some warming, the day-by-day warming shelter and I think where they've also attempted to do some other homelessness-type programs, but activities escaped me at the time, but that's where the public.
Should I direct that person to the CDB Action Plan, like the five-year?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is a prospect if the, if they would want to put together some kind of homeless shelter-type program. We're looking at ways to help that happen. Again, having to follow the federal guidelines or requirements. We're not going to do any kind of construction because you can't do that.
Sure.
So, the revolving loan fund is all the money that gets repaid when people sell their houses and then we put that into other houses again. And the 321 is the new money we get, that's where we can actually put it into not only houses, but the public facilities that we fund with the United Way and the Community Foundation. We put about $100,000 a year into that program. As I mentioned, we do a lot of blight removal in the neighborhoods with that money as well as the housing rehabilitation. And we've worked closely with the Housing Authority, Advo Cap and GOHNI to kind of leverage those funds so that we can get bigger bang for our block grant dollars and the city's dollars. And Ken, actually, in Darren's office is 100% funded with those dollars. He does many projects throughout the year and he works directly with the homeowners and the contractors to make sure they follow all the block grant rules. And Darlene tracks all the dollars.
So, it looks like we're down on our numbers of owner rehab, 20 in 2015, 16 in 2016, and 11 for 2017. What are we on track for 2018 of those owner rehabs?
Let's see, thinking back to when it was applied for in March. I might have to turn around and ask Darlene if she can prompt me with that one. Where are we at with owner rehabs this year in 2018?
Well, we usually hope to average between 15 and 20, but in 17, we didn't get our release of funds until November. So, it was very hard to get the money spent and projects done by our program year, which runs until April 3rd.
And then we try to put that into a calendar year for city budgeting purposes. So, when the federal government doesn't release funds, we can't do projects.
Right, so where are we at for 2018 so far? Do you have an idea, rough?
We just got our release about a month ago, so it's going to be tight.
Nobody, nobody, nobody wastes the money, do they? Alan, in a recent meeting, we talked about the $5,000 help to people who would take a formerly one-story or single-family, converted to two-family, back to a single-family, felt that five was not enough, which I think we all agreed, it's got to, it's got to be more. Where would those funds, if it's 20, for example, for example, where would those funds come from?
That would have to come out of the city's Healthy Neighborhoods program because we, yeah, that's, that's the HNI funds. And that, the way it's set up is that it would be, 5,000 would never be returned. I mean, in theory, the $20,000 would basically be a grant that typically it's a forgiven loan if they stay on the property for five years.
And follow our guidelines as well.
Yes, for the rehabilitation, yep. So, we could increase that, it just decreases the principal left in the fund for other loans for other activities.
But we've had very few people use the $5,000.
A handful.
Yeah, not much. But, I mean, in that vein, we are seeing more people know that those programs exist or that the line is going up and we're anticipating, I think, for next year. We're budgeting, we're thinking for next year, we're going to have spent at least $200,000 and a lion's share of that will come out of owner occupied. But we continue to try and get the word out and promote that. In fact, like, I think next month, we're, we're going to go to the Winnebago, the next couple of months, we're going to go to Winnebago Apartment Association and talk about some of our programs.
I don't know about the railtors, how many railtors have been contacted to make them aware of this? Because a number of the railtors, having done a recent home search with a family member, are not even aware of that.
A lot of local ones, we know that a lot, a lot of the more local ones, so if you're at First Weber, I think most of them know about our programs, Remax, I think they do. But some of the ones that are coming in from outside the area, probably, we don't have, we haven't built a relationship with them.
Is the challenge such that with the market being so fast and these offers and accepted offers happening so quickly? Because it's my understanding, they have to put in the application for the 5,000 before they even put the offer in. Is that a deterrent because they don't want to miss an offer that they could put in?
Could be, we should talk to them about that, there is a process you have to follow.
Obviously.
That's, that probably is where things slow down because, you know, we have to go to the loan committee, we have to do all these things, so it's not, you know, we do it as quick as we can, but yeah, it's not.
So, we have to encourage people who are interested in utilizing that to get their application in before they even start hunting, right? Because then it's good for, it's not tied specifically to a property, correct?
No, it's tied for the, for which program?
The 5,000 down payment assistance?
That is tied to a property in a name.
Oh, it is?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's not, that's not a citywide program.
But the point about could it be done so that it's tied to a person more so than a property until they come back with maybe the second step?
Exactly, like a prequalification type thing.
We can look into that.
That's interesting.
That would, you know, then allow them to like, you know.
Do a search with that in their pocket.
Or like getting pre-qualified for a loan for a house, you want, you want those steps up front, makes a lot of sense.
If it's possible, I don't, I don't know, but that would, especially since, you know, you might go look at a house and then you put in, you're going to be putting in an offer and then two other are coming in, you know, then if you have to wait until the review committee, then maybe that, you're just not going to even bother.
I think it goes towards any of those grants and loans, and we've talked about this a little bit. Trying to make sure that process is as easy as possible. We obviously understand the government restraints with every single one of those dollars, but allowing them to use it, use as much as possible. And I know, you know, to his point, to the mayor's point, where 5,000 just isn't enough incentive. You know, where is that sweet spot, all of those, whether it's the rental rehabs or the conversion ones or the down payment?
And I noticed too, when we have, when we're looking at these enhancements, for example, you know, admin services, human resources, looking at employee education reimbursement program. You know, I, I don't know, I have seen other cities also do particular down payment assistance housing, I guess, sweetened that as we're trying to attract talent and that too. You know, perhaps there's an opportunity of even having an additional, I guess, category there for city employees or something to kind of help build, you know, and strengthen some of those neighborhoods that ties into our strategic plan. You know, that's another thought of that, I guess, attraction package.
No, that's, that's understood and that's another thing why we want to use, also why we want to use that quality of life map. I think we can help in say, you know, 5,000 is good here, maybe in some of these other areas where we're trying to really promote change and you go up to 10,000 or you go to 7,500.
Yeah, so it's not a cookie cutter, it's true.
But we always have to keep an eye on that particular program because that is a grant program, so those monies don't flow back. That's why we like the rehab program because those monies flow back into, into the, into the city. But we, we have good terms, the term is 0%, that's a pretty good loan number. But we have to look at, you know, and some of those are just quarterly programs and it's a 10-year loan. So, I think we have good terms. We have to sit down with the rental industry because we're not getting a lot of takers with those dollars yet and that's going to be a significant, that, they're significant, they can be a significant player in these neighborhoods. So, we got to figure out a way to make that program better. We thought we had streamlined it a number of years ago, we obviously didn't streamline it enough, so we'll have to go and talk with them again.
Yeah, I'm going to step you very quickly through just some of these small budgets. The bicycle fund, that is just a, there's a small boarding commission that's with that. Historical marker fund, and then as Alan has already referenced, the community development special fund, that's where the new loan monies go. So, then let's go to page 317 because that will lead us into the Healthy Neighborhoods initiatives, which we have briefly started to talk about. Is there anything you wanted to talk about with that specifically, Alan?
Uh, let's see, we're hoping to use the Rock the Block activities to spur more interest in using that funding for all the different categories we have. As Mr. Burridge mentioned, we did create that micro-grant program specifically for the Rock the Block event, which will be held next spring. And that would be coming out of this program and then the $20,000 we're talking about, this is the fund where that $20,000 would come out of for the acquisition.
And is that budgeted, Alan, that, you said the 20,000, is that, is that budgeted within the 532,000 budgeted in this fund?
That, that 20,000 would be per parcel, so that would be one of the activities within the 532. So, in theory, if we get five of those, that would be $100,000 out of that 532.
And some of the programs that have been alluded to, the mayor talked about it, deputy mayor talked about it, you know, if we're going to ratchet those up?
That's where this.
Is that assuming that we're going to be ratcheting that up?
No, that just was our estimate based on our past history as to what kind of activity we're expecting. So, if we're going to increase those forgivable loan amounts, that would increase that 532 to 700,000. But we'd come back with a budget amendment because this is all city money. It wouldn't be anything that has to do with the property levy or state aids, this is city funds.
Certainly, the staff was alluding to that and darn near hinting or if not recommending during your presentation. Council, I think, was very receptive to it. I haven't heard a single council member say anything doubts about maybe ratcheting it up.
So, we could increase that 532 to 700 pretty easily, I think.
Yeah, because otherwise you're just going to do a paper chase in February or March with a budget adjustment. You may want to do it, it sounds like even though the council hasn't approved it, I'm hearing very positively that council wants to tweak it. You may want to come up with a way to experiment, but I think council wants to experiment it at a minimum.
And I, and I'd just like to say this, I've said it before and I'll, I'll say it again, I question the wisdom. This is no offense meant, I know that some of the plans with some of our partner entities really focus on increasing the number of neighborhood associations and number of neighborhood plans, but if we also look at our objectives for implementing activities according to neighborhood plans, the wisdom that I'm questioning is when we go broad, we don't go deep with those things. So, you know, do we need to look at potentially adjusting and perhaps doing more of the activities and implementation pieces to show some results as opposed to creating more associations that we can't service?
Well, we can service, we can service the associations that we create because that's where we're working with, with GOHNI staff. They are the ones who build those neighborhood associations to us. I think the point you're getting at is the neighborhood planning. Do we create another plan in that neighborhood and that's just another set of, that's just another set of items that staff has to work out, work on. But not all plans are that deep. I mean, that, if you're, if we're doing something over in Sawyer Creek, it's, you know, on the, on the west side, the issues with a west-side neighborhood, there's probably not a lot because it's such a newer neighborhood. But you get down to the Middle Villages, River East, Stevens Park, they're going, they're going to have a lot more complex issues and I think it's still worth it for us to.
And they're denser.
Yes, yes.
Population is significantly denser, so we're talking about a lot more social and brick-and-mortar issues, right?
Yes.
More likely to qualify for the GOHNI funding programs.
Correct.
And with the work that the Rental Housing Advisory Board has done in terms of identifying the, we don't want to call them target neighborhoods, but that's the term people have become accustomed to. That's where maybe targeting our resources, ratcheting them up, because I would argue, say Sawyer Creek, there shouldn't be any of those programs there and that's a good thing. But the areas that do need it, and we've got a color-coded map that shows where our deepest, darkest red color is the one that has the highest level of concern, we ought to be putting resources. And that's what I, that's what I heard also, council, and it wasn't just Councilor Paul Mary. I'm seeing a few nods from council members saying, yeah, that's kind of where we want to go and we might as well put it in and even though we need to come back, circle back with a policy, I think that's coming very soon.
Some program adjustments that we would bring back to council.
Because I love the, I love the fact that we're getting more neighborhood associations, but we got to dig deep on those areas that are the true in need. And this is what, that's what HNI program is all about.
And that's why when we start, when we start laying over those neighborhood boundaries on that quality of life map, then things will start to come together and I think we can really do some good programming. We can really use that as a, as a good implementation tool.
And we may also be looking at bringing in, you know, other entities to assist with some of that. There's plenty of need.
Stevens Park has, has had consistent, strong leadership to, and they've accomplished an awful, awful lot in, what, six, seven years? I mean, there's, when people ask me why neighborhood association, I use Stevens Park as an example. Here's what the neighborhood has brought to their neighborhood as far as park improvements.
Middle Village is not a great example. The two green spaces that we created in there.
And it's kind of full of weeds too.
What was that?
Kind of full of weeds.
Yes, they are, we were given some nasty little weed seeds in that fill, for sure. It's been a challenge.
Just pull the weed one at a time.
On the subject of weeds, we'll keep moving along. Community Development Black Grant, that's another grant program. The next item on page 321. Do you have anything for that, Alan?
No, I, I think I covered that with the.
So, the next one would be the Local Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund.
That's the one that we contract with GOEDC to administer on our behalf. And we've taken some of the money out of this fund to match the WDC grant for the Capital Catalyst.
Which had been very successful.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Even though our funds are used for, for loans.
Loans only.
A portion of theirs is grants, but a good portion, a better portion of it is for, for loans. So, that's, that's creating a good fund and it's been circulating, it's fully committed, the funds that we've been awarded so far.
Phase one was fully committed and phase two has just started in the last few months. And they've got a pipeline already set up of projects.
And I think finance is working through the issues in terms of making sure that they have adequate funds available so that as loans come up, they're ready to go. But the Capital Catalyst Fund, I wouldn't be surprised if we're fully committed at this time next year.
We'll be talking Capital Catalyst three someday.
And this was where we, obviously in 18, we transferred out some funds from this to, for the Oshkosh Corp.
Yes.
Project, okay.
But we're still, at the end of the year, we still have almost 1.8 million and that's assuming not a lot of repayments on the loans, but everybody's current on all of their loans, that's a really good thing. So, that'll, that'll continue to grow and as we, successful loans, we'll replenish that fund over time.
Now, are we required, are we doing the oversight in terms of repayment or is that contact, is that WEDC? That's all on?
GOEDC.
Or EDC, I'm sorry.
All GOEDC, they provide us a report, which I think we share clearly off the top of my head.
And there, I got to tell you, the committee has taken their work very seriously. Even though we are a lender of last resort, they, there's a couple bankers on that group and they are looking at that as if it's their own bank's money and I think that's probably the best compliment you can pay to that group.
It's definitely covering, from what I understand, gap financing for many.
Yep.
But it's not a gift, they take a look at these things and they have said no probably as many times as they've said yes. And that, we never see that, and that's a good thing.
Well, that would take us to 325, the industrial park. This is, handles a lot of the upkeep, the maintenance. Well, that would take us to 325, the industrial park. This is, um, handles a lot of the upkeep, the maintenance, and the, the, um, mowing costs, as well as when there is land sales, the revenue does come back into this fund. Uh, the ending fund balance is really representative of the land ownership that we currently hold. And so, that would be the amount of industrial park that we currently hold on our balance sheet.
Does our Parks Department do the mowing for those, or who, who does the mowing?
We've contracted with farmers. Uh, they give us proposals or bids for planting alfalfa or soybeans, or harvesting the hay for their animals.
Nice.
So, page 327 would then lead us into our TIF section. Um, were there specific TIFs that the common council wanted to address, or do you want to page through them individually? Continue on?
Okay.
Uh, so then the last one would be page 381, which is the redevelopment. Um, and that would be our RDA, uh, which also has a large amount of land, which you are seeing, uh, reflect, reflective in the net position, uh, on that budget report. Uh, so, if there are no questions in regards to the RDA, we do need to step back to page 241, which brings us into our Inspections Fund. And our first division up would be the Weights and Measures Division. Uh, that is a service that the city has brought back in to, um, performing internally, and has let go of a state contract. So, I'll turn this over to, uh, Mr. Davis and Mr. Zarati.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zarati is our chief building official, so he's responsible for, uh, Weights and Measures, Building Inspection Code Enforcement, and the Rental Housing, uh, inspections as well. And that's one of the budget enhancement, uh, list items, but we'll get to that maybe at some point later. But just to give you a full context to what Mr. Zarati's responsibilities are, Weights and Measures is one of those, uh, inspection services that the city traditionally provided. Uh, we did take a hiatus and hired the state to do the inspections, uh, but we found that the state was doing a very haphazard, not complete job on that. Uh, and they weren't keeping track of the devices, uh, they weren't, uh, testing devices. Uh, so we looked at bringing that back in, and with that, maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Zarati. I think we're doing a much more effective, uh, job at doing that.
Right. And so, with that, um, what we had hoped to do would be to make sure all of the devices were accounted for in the city, um, and also collect the fees for those devices for those inspections. And, um, for this last year, uh, we have collected all of the fees for the licenses that basically is renewal of all the devices that we test. Um, and then we had a goal of 80% inspection of those devices. And to our knowledge, we have done all of the inspections of those devices for this year. So, this program's working really well. We have a very good staff person, uh, doing this. Um, we do have some objectives for next year, that's something that hasn't been done. Um, one of the big things would be, um, we're measuring the taxi services that we have out there. So, make sure they're charging the right amount per tenth of a mile, I believe it is. Um, but that's what we're doing with that. And then also, I guess, educating some of the owners of the businesses as to what is going on or why we're doing the, the service for them.
So, our next division would be the Inspections Division. That would be the division that performs, uh, a majority of the city inspections.
Yes, and this is where people come to, uh, ask questions about their property, about potential projects. They do a lot of consultation before anybody even applies for a permit. Uh, then they'd apply through, uh, John's, Mr. Zarati's office for the permit, often in concert with a zoning, uh, review. And then they do all the inspections through final occupancy, and that information is then passed on to the assessor's office so that they have a record of, uh, what's been done, so we can fairly inequitably assess people. So, it's kind of a continuum where, uh, different divisions pass on a project so that everybody is processed as quickly as possible. And in this particular area, the history had been in Oshkosh that we were very slow, and we were not very responsive. And I think Mr. Zarati has turned that around, and now I think we're held out as one of the shining examples of what you can do, uh, if a community puts its mind to it, uh, accelerate the review and inspection process. So, we've got a lot of measurables, uh, that Mr. Zarati and his staff consistently meet and exceed. Uh, so I'm very proud to talk about them on that, on that measure. And maybe I'll let Mr. Zarati talk a little bit about the, uh, accomplishments and things in the key performance indicators.
Okay, yeah. So, I think one of the big things, especially for development with us, is getting our commercial plan reviews done in less than five days. Um, right now, we're averaging three days. Um, that's gone up a little bit, uh, since 2016, but I have that just because I think we have so much going on that it's just taking a little bit longer to keep up with the amount of plans, which is a good thing. But we're still under the five-day, uh, that we were hoping for.
Real selling point, because if you go to the state, there are how many weeks out?
Yeah, on the state right now, they're probably averaging about six to seven weeks out on a review. So, you've gotta really plan in advance for that to hope that you're gonna get in for the time that you want. But if you decide, hey, we wanna do something next week or in two weeks, that's, with the state, is probably not gonna happen. I mean, you're, they're not gonna give you any special attention. They're so busy that even, I think, the priority inspection, our priority reviews are backed up probably about two to three weeks.
I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Zarati and a representative from the, uh, the state agency that regulates this. And I was concerned, because this is so good compared to what our businesses get when they go to the state. And she indicated she was very pleased with our performance and that, uh, and I wanted to make sure that they had no intention of trying to maybe take that in, and they said no, they were very pleased and wanted to continue that. And this has made a huge difference, uh, you know, of late, you know, with the rental inspection program. That kind of put, uh, the staff was getting blamed for the, the policy decision that really isn't our realm. As we discussed with the council, but I think they've done an outstanding job. These numbers of, uh, it, our goal is to get 85% of the first-time, uh, permit, and we're hitting 90. Uh, we're still doing that, even with increased activity in the commercial side. We're just doing very well. These are, um, I'd put us up with anybody in the state in terms of getting these types of things done. It's, uh, quite a turnaround. And it all started with a process improvement discussion that the council had, and staff took it to heart, and we've, this is a, an area of strength for the city. I, I, not just within community development, but throughout the city. I'm, I'm very pleased with the work that, um, Mr. Zarati and his group have done.
About a year ago, I ran into a contractor I've known for a long time in the parking lot of the grocery store in the summer. And he wanted to tell me how things have changed so fantastically. Like, he spent so much time telling me his old bag of ice melted. That's how long he was going on about their great job you guys were doing, so.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
So, um, I have a question about the key performance measures that are on this, too. And, um, you know, as we're talking about, I think every newsletter that we receive, um, we get, um, an update, or maybe it's monthly or quarterly, on the number of building permits that get issued. And, um, you know, as we talk about whether or not the juice is worth the fees on our rental inspections program, the question comes whether or not we can look at the number of building permits for repairs and such in those areas where we have done, um, rental inspections and/or other inspections. Is there a way in which we can show some, some kind of outcome, recognizing that, you know, correlation isn't always causation, but coincidentally, you know, are we able to say, in this area where we're, we've been concentrating, you know, do we have a trend line as to the number of building permits or repair permits and those kinds of, um, improvements? As a re, you know, I, I wouldn't attribute it 100% to the, the result of that program, but it has to be a factor.
Well, and I think that is some of the things that we're looking at with, with the rental program that we've talked through with that mapping. You know, we're showing these dark red areas as the worst, uh, as an, for the average of the city. But maybe as we are doing the inspections and they're pulling permits and making these repairs, now those are no longer that dark red. They're maybe going to maybe more of the pink, or they're going more towards the average. You know, so they're getting more towards fixing that up. And so, we're seeing some of those areas, hopefully, of the inspection areas, that maybe we lose some of those areas, because they're no longer needed to be in that program, because they're not in those darker shades.
Right.
Um, that's something that we really haven't tracked yet, just because-
I know.
Our program has been so small.
I know.
Um, but hopefully, if we-
I just, I mean, I hate to dump on, you know, our GIS folks, but it seems like, you know, maybe there's an opportunity of even taking those building permit numbers that we see into the GIS layers to even perhaps map that over.
And that's something they definitely can do. I mean, they're very good with GIS. We've got some really good staff for that.
Yes, we do.
Um, and you all saw the maps that they produced, uh, from the information that we gave them to create those maps.
And fortunately, with the, uh, program that we have for the Building Inspection Tracking System, everything's tracked by the parcel, so they'd be able to track, dump all that, dump all that information in, yes. It's just a matter of getting their time and dedicating some time and, uh, coming up with results that we can show make sense. Yep.
This might be the appropriate time to segue into this enhancement, because this fund was spun off of the general fund several years ago, in part due to expenditure restraint, uh, considerations, but also because, you know, there are ups and downs in building inspections, and as a business model, they need to sustain themselves. Because when there is another downturn in the economy, their, their reserve is, is used to fund the continuing activities, because the service continues long after the building permits issue. In fact, 99% of the work is still yet to be done once the building permits issued. The reason I say that is because the Rental Housing Inspection Program, because of the way it was done at the state level, is going to be a money loser for us to do that. That, and I, and I don't say that to discourage you from doing it. In fact, it's quite the opposite. It's just that it's gonna be in this program, and the program is gonna have to get funded with some, some general fund support, because people paying their building permit to get an addition done on their house shouldn't be subsidized in the Rental Housing Inspection Program. That Rental Housing Inspection Program needs to be fully funded. And that's the enhancement on page 13, which I think, you know, council members, uh, Mugrour and Palmeri are familiar with, uh, because they're on the committee. They talked about it a little bit just last week. But the enhancement is in that, uh, in there. And Alan or John, I'm not sure which one you wanna talk about it, but I think now is the time to do it.
Yes.
But it seems like we could show also, perhaps, going back to the assessor, you know, assessed value and/or sales more. You know, these market analysis things that are referred to as ways of measuring, you know, some of our neighborhood revitalization efforts. You know, if we are indeed seeing not just an increased number of building permits and repairs and curb appeal things going on, also looking at those property values and whether or not, while we may not be able to directly link, there may be an opportunity of seeing, you know, where are those increases in property value and sales and such that, that's coming into, I guess, another bucket, if you will.
So, on that enhancement, um, what's the contractual services for 5,000?
Uh, we're looking at a very low-key rollout, so we're not planning to add any staff for this. We're gonna use existing staff, but my, staff gets busy with their regular job. Uh, so we do have a contractor that would be available to fill in for those, uh, times through the year where we'd have responses that staff can't handle, but we have a contractor who could go do it for.
Okay, right.
In general, I think the model is that, uh, maybe starting around this time of year through May, it, staff will be, staff will be doing it. But once things start ratcheting up for the construction season, then we may need to get some outside resources to take care of it.
But, yeah, I would think it'd be rather easy to, as we do the program, you know, if we find violations and they start pulling permits to fix the violations, it should be pretty easy to track how much revenue is generated by that and the enhancement to the, to the value of the property. I would think, I mean, that, that would get back then into the assessor's office. But you would see an address where maybe it was valued at, let's just say, 50,000. Now, they did the, the improvements that needed to be done legally, um, that, that now the value may have gone up 5,000 bucks. So, I would think it'd be pretty easy to track those figures and, and basically say the program's working.
Oh, yes, I agree with that, but we're still gonna have to-
Gotta fund it somehow.
Seed money, right. You plant the seed here, and you'll harvest it somewhere else.
Either way, it's not going to, to, you know, pay for the program we're gonna have to pay for, you know, through the, through the tax rate. But, um, it, it needs to be done, either way.
It gets a little, it gets a little more difficult when the economy's in a boom like right now.
Sure.
When it's in the, how do you, how do you measure what really happened when, you know, you, you list a home now and it gets sold, and the prices are going up, and it's, it's gonna swing and turn. So, how do you factor that in that, okay, the economy took a, took a nosedive?
But I think we see how much it costs us when we don't do these things, or when deferred maintenance continues and the property values decrease. If we look at our median property sales for the area in, you know, comparison within the county, within the state, and so on, we lag, we lag, we lag. Um, so, I, I think it's just as important at, uh, looking at how much it costs us when we don't do these things.
In this particular one, um, I don't know if, without being educated as to what the proposal is, I don't know how well council's able to fully vet the $25,000 investment that, that's being asked. But, so I don't know when that's appropriate and how that, it's, it's the timing of it. And that, I know the board, we did push to get a decision before the budget process, but not having briefed council on what we suggest. I don't know how that will come into it. Uh, on the second part of it, some of the, the improvements, I just wanna caution, I guess, um, the, the improvements that are being made to the properties or the, uh, fixing of code violations results in very little increases to the actual assessed or even appraised values. The things that are gonna swing assessed values and things like that are massive home improvements, such as new windows, siding, um, roofs, additions. Fixing hand railings and, and window screens isn't gonna push an assessed value anywhere. So, just, you can't necessarily correlate one to the other, expecting to see an increase just by, um, having pulled permits.
And I would disagree respectfully, uh, on that, because we have seen direct response when some of these repairs that have been neglected for a significant period of time do get addressed. All of a sudden, it's like, oh, wow, you know, I think I'm gonna do this extra thing, new windows or new siding. We've, we've been seeing that in the central city. So, while you may not be able to directly tie it in to that property, um, inspection, the surrounding, uh, I guess, contagiousness, um, a, a, at least from an anecdotal standpoint, um, it, it is challenging to pull that into the, the data. But I, I would, I would say that we have seen improvements as a result of the enforcement and those that it just may be more difficult to tie directly in.
Okay, good points.
Okay. That would, we have two, uh, brief sections in the Capital Improvement Program in relation to community development. They would start on page 28. And we'll just be covering Year 1, because Year 1 is what you will adopt in November.
So, page 28, uh, 2019 dash 28. We're proposing the, uh, three projects at the top, blight removal from neighborhood redevelopment scattered sites, uh, which we've seen has been very effective when it comes to acquiring vacant properties, where we don't have to relocate anybody. Uh, and then we can tear those down for future sale to, uh, for redevelopment. Uh, the Great Neighborhoods Initiative, which is the funding that's helped, uh, with neighborhood plan implementation in Stevens Park, uh, Miller's Bay, even Jackson Street have the safety studies being funded with this, uh, particular funding. And I think it was interesting that, based on our, uh, conversation about industrial parks, uh, we were thinking we needed new signs, and I heard it from council, yes. we needed new signs and I heard it from council, yes, we need new signs.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's in the base budget.
Yes.
Are these increases from previous years?
Uh, Great Neighborhoods is the same. The signs are brand new and I believe the blight removal for neighborhood scattered sites would be brand new.
Okay.
We had it for, just for South Shore in the past.
Now we're saying in general, we, we just want to have them. And I think that was the earlier discussion.
Right.
On some of the target neighborhoods, this is, this is where we need to flex our muscles if we're going to do it.
Yeah. Well, I, and mild increases is, is expected, especially if the program is starting to take off and get going.
Yeah.
And we see some significant improvements, so.
Tell you one of the favorite things a neighborhood association likes to see is one of those scattered site buildings come down.
Well, sure. And then also I have money available, so when they do submit a plan for improvements in their neighborhood that we have, we're able to assist them. We're not just talking the talk.
Yep. And we kind of balance between block grant and this funding because block grant has some federal strings, which we don't like to use if at all possible. So my expectation is the three hundred thousand right here would go to reps and AccuCom coming down at Sawyer Creek. Is that where we program that funding to go?
Yes. And Mr. Davis, this is a continuing activity. We have had this before.
We have.
The last three to five years.
Yeah, I remember this from last year.
Right. Yeah. I guess my question was, was, is there an increase?
It's, it's still three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. But the last couple of years, we, we targeted.
Well, some of them went to the arena.
A lot of them, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
It just got programmed for different.
Right. It's really going back to what it was intended for. Cause, cause I, right, okay, there you go. Intended for, all right. That's the only page on which, oh, there are some TIF, TIF ones, page forty-three and forty-four of the same document.
Yes. Page twenty nineteen forty-three, I can report, we've got tentative approval for that first project. We, we put this together back in May when we make the application and the eight hundred thousand, looks like it's going to be coming through. Oshkosh Corp's donation looks like it's coming through, so we'll be able to build the project from the Tribal Heritage Trail all the way to Rainbow Memorial Park. Marion Road Redevelopment Remediation, we still own three sites over there and each of them will take some kind of remediation. That's coming out of TIF twenty-one, that we've reserved that funding out of TIF twenty-one's balance. The next two are kind of the same. These are on the south side, both sides of Main Street. On the west side, we have the remediation of a former gas station at Seventh and Eighth. And on the other side of the street, you have One East Eighth. We have eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that are reserved in TID twenty. We just don't know which one we're going to spend sooner rather than later. It depends on when development comes along. And that's the maximum we can spend. We don't have any other dollars. So if it's going to be above that, then the developer would have to pay for it. It would have to get grant funds to supplement some of this. So that's been allocated. We do push this off another year if we don't spend that, if we don't get a development. Then last item, the South Shore East Riverwalk Pioneer Drive Design and Permitting. That would be a project that would take the Riverwalk from Main Street over to the railroad tracks. We're hoping to be able to do that. We were expecting to start the design next year, and that's the one where I mentioned the CN actually owns that property. So we're working with CN to try to obtain that property. That's one of those question marks that developers have about forty-three E seventh. But to start that process, it's, it takes a long time to get the permits to actually do a project. So I'm proposing that, that we take some TID twenty money to start the design and permitting for that Riverwalk with anticipation of getting the property and actually getting a grant to actually build it in twenty twenty. So it's two years away.
So with that, Alan, would that be the design piece of it, that would be coming after we get the master plan done, correct?
Uh, let's see. The master plan for the Riverwalk is done?
No, I mean the master plan for the Sawdust District.
Okay, the Sawdust District Master Plan, that would be, if it's done in the first quarter of nineteen, that would jive exact.
Okay.
Very well with that.
So this would just come on the heels of that?
Yep. So if there's anything we'd want to change, we could incorporate that into the design, yes.
Maybe one, just to suggest a comment, as you start to work with Canadian National, maybe we should get our local federal congressman involved since the federal government controls railroad. It wouldn't hurt to have one of their local representatives at, at least at the table, in case we need to push a little bit.
Yes, I think we're going to need to.
Yeah, I mean, even with the whole, that whole Pioneer Drive thing.
Yeah, I mean, we could have a new congressman, but currently I know Congressman Grootman has been willing to work with us on some stuff, his office. So matter of just keeping them engaged in the process.
True. And then the item that's not here that was alluded to, at, at the November seventh meeting when we discussed CIPs in general, the issue of favorable economic conditions, probably the one that's most likely going to come out is really going to be Compass Way. That's been Kelly's pet project. She's been working with, in contrast, Watco has been, and I was, when all the Allerton Drive stuff was going on, you know I was very critical of them, but they've been very cooperative with us on, on everything we've been doing out there. And they're probably our biggest real estate.
Advocate.
Advocate right now, which is, which is good news and bad news. Good news is they're likely going to be helping us sell properties, but the more they sell the properties, the likelihood of us needing to get Compass Way paved is increasing.
But won't there be, if we're selling land, then that money can be used for infrastructure, correct? Or not?
Technically, the land sales are to replenish that fund because that, the, the industrial park fund is independent of the TIF. And that is, it's property rich and cash poor. So the idea is that that land gets sold and gets, replenishes that fund. So that, that's, it's good that it replenishes that fund, but the TIF itself, the development, is supposed to pay for the improvement. The dilemma is that, that the, the properties getting developed aren't necessarily big manufacturing sites. They're pretty much warehouses.
Warehousing.
Would this though, that being said, would this be one then where maybe we would want to do some short-term borrowing to fund that infrastructure?
Yes, in short, yes. And that's where the favorable economic conditions, we, we may need, the idea was that if we got more, if we got more development out of it, that would justify it. But the payback will be slower because it's, we need to get, we need to get Compass Way done. It's almost, even with, between the time that Kelly submitted it and now, the likelihood of that development has just.
Does any of the states WDC money can be used towards that type of infrastructure?
Well, actually, WDC we cannot, but Alan mentioned that we actually were meeting with the EDA, which is Economic Development Administration, a federal unit of government. We're meeting with a rep today to talk about a grant program they have. So it'd be a fifty, fifty percent match. And, you know, as Mark said, this is kind of my pet project. And, you know, the infrastructure was put in, in the fall of fourteen, finished up in the spring of fifteen. So typically I think our policy is let it sit for three years, kind of let it settle. But now we're getting to the point where we're going to have increased truck traffic, that, which will mean more maintenance for our streets division to protect our utilities that are out there since there's not concrete on there. It's just gravel. And with the new buildings that we're anticipating in early twenty nineteen and then the transload terminal traffic, you know, we're a little nervous just because is it going to create dust? Is it going to create maintenance issues for our streets? And that means plowing. And like I said, making sure we're protecting our infrastructure. So that's why we started looking for alternatives, obviously considered WDC, but they really look more into the central city. So that's when we started, we actually saw an EDA rep at a conference and we just said, hey, you know, we have this road. We're looking to get paved out here. And they love these types of projects because it's for an industrial park. It's not just for one user, it's for multiple folks. So we have, what would you say, definitely over a mile of road we would need to install.
But it's just road, right? All the other infrastructures?
Everything else is done.
Correct.
Yeah, it's just, literally, it's just fine, fine grading and.
The concrete.
And pavement.
Now, would that, that being said, pavement, that'd be kind of more, have to be almost like a truck rail pavement. That'd be thicker concrete.
Yes, yes.
Because of the fact that, of the weight of the vehicles going in and out.
Yes.
Absolutely right.
So that adds to the cost too, but just.
And I see you've got it in twenty twenties, non-funded at one point five.
Correct.
Correct.
So this is one of those where in order to take advantage of the fact that these people want to buy and develop.
Well, yeah, I would think any company wanting to build in that area would rather have concrete than gravel because it affects their vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
And helps it last, makes it last longer for us. And I think that's where Kelly darn near has an associate's degree in engineering with all she's learned from this project.
Rail engineering.
And where does the, at what point, you know, does development be hindered by it not being completed?
Exactly. Well, and like I said.
Obviously right now, there's nothing being built. It's okay. But over the course of nine months to a, to a year, that might be all right, but fifteen to eighteen months.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it impacts them. And then like I said, from a city standpoint, we have util, I don't know if anybody's driven out there with utility sticking out, you know, we, we're going to have these big trucks that are not maybe familiar with the area coming out there. So when does it become a city cost also? So that's why we're just looking at supporting that.
Just a little bit like Malvern in a sense that it's, has moved up the priority list?
Yeah. I mean, that's where, I wasn't sure which one.
It affects, it affects future development in that area.
It's going to be a matter of debt service and hopefully Ms. Larson will be feeling a little bit better by then that she can kind of explain it. But yeah, it's all of the above that we've got to deal with.
And knowing that, that's why we really were looking for grants. And the EDA grant, like I said, we met with him and we're going to be showing him the site today. So we're hoping to really be able to maximize, you know, the grant dollars, what we could do with it, and then, you know, how much you'd have to borrow. We'd have to borrow for it.
Minimize that.
Minimize that impact.
And I'm even thinking a little bit, you know, because there's so much uncertainty in the Pioneer Road area that maybe some of that will get shifted, you know, for a year. Yeah, only be, I, I mean, I know planning is important over there for future development, but same time, if we're just in negotiations, negotiations and we're circling with Canadian National, then does it make sense to put two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars designated for something that could be three, four, or five years?
If it wasn't TIF funds, I would say yes, but the, the money that we have in the Sawdust District is for TIF twenty and I can't spend it in TIF twenty-three.
Yeah. If you recall during strategic planning.
You can't use it as a toner, so.
No, no, that, that, that window of opportunity has, has passed. You may recall during strategic planning, we were asked by Walter to come up with some bad scenario that we'd have to deal with. And Alan's and my scenario was, what if we're successful? And it's, and that, that's where the whole discussion that Trina and I came up with favorable economic conditions is like curse us with these problems, but they're, they're good problems to have. We've got demand that's now created, but it now creates a responsibility for us and we have to find a way to fund those things. And that's why we threw that out there. But even between the time we came up with the concept of favorable economic conditions and now, this one has just moved forward. The, the likelihood of us needing to build this road next year is, is darn near imminent. That's, that's pretty much all we have with capital improvements. And I know the parks department's been waiting and maybe I'd suggest maybe a quick.
I was going to say, I had another break.
I, and I told the guy from La Shores to come between ten-thirty and eleven, so last call for coffee.
Wow.
Thank you.
Take care of that. I think I might too.
Fine. What are we doing?
Bring them in. I can't remember what, but we're, we're bringing something in.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break.
Page 119, with the operation budget for the overall Parks Department. Mr. Mauer, I'll turn it over to.
Great, thank you, and good morning, council members. Chad and I will be up here throughout the whole division budgets, and then the rest of the staff will join us as their individual divisions come up, but we really work on our budgets as a team. We have about seven or eight different budgets that we work on, and because we cross over into the various divisions, I, we need to work together to pull these together. Throughout the discussion and our budgets, you're going to hear us talk about our department's strategic plan, so I wanted to make sure that I gave you a copy of that, circulating those around. You're going to see, we worked with Walter Janikowski late last winter, early into the spring. I think we adopted or approved our department's strategic plan back in April. We've shared it with our, all of our staff, our frontline staff, all programming staff, to really get them to buy into it. You'll see a lot of the items that we have tie into the city's strategic plan, obviously, but includes individual projects that we'll be working on over the next two years, and again, those are touched on throughout the division budgets. Starting on page 119, we'll jump into the Parks Department. What you're going to hear again throughout is, I think we really do a, a good job promoting and providing or developing public-private relationships, and, and creating neighborhoods and working with the neighborhood associations. You're going to see and hear about a lot of grants, a lot of donations, alternative funding sources that we are working on and achieving, so staff will be talking about those. An item that I wanted to make sure that the council is aware of, Ann Schaefer, who's our marketing and fund development coordinator, she has budgeted about 25% in the Parks Department, or the Parks budget, and in the Senior Center, she is about 50%. The other 30% comes out of community development, Mr. Davis's budget, she works closely with the neighborhood associations. So it's really a good connection for us and Alan's staff and all the neighborhood associations because we do so much, because a lot of those associations are focused around many of our neighborhood parks. So you'll see that Ann is accounted for in a couple of different areas. A couple of significant accomplishments that Chad and I can answer any questions you might have, and a lot of these are going to be capital improvement, but we'll get into some of those in the, in the, later on as well. But restroom renovation at Fugelberg Boat Launch, that project is completed, took us a little bit longer. What happened was some of our toiletries and some of the other plumbing amenities were lost during the hurricane that was down south, so that delayed the project a little bit until they could be relocated and shipped up here. But the project is completed, and I think the restroom turned out great, just like our other restroom renovations have in the past. South Park Lagoon and the associated park projects, obviously completed this year. A lot of coordination between our department, engineering, stormwater staff, and I think, although it was a long project, I think we're hearing a lot of great comments from the citizens. I think the improvements that were done, you're going to see increased usage of that park. You know, the parking lot was completed, we also completed the new playground structure, but then as part of the lagoons, a lot of the pathwork was reconstructed, they're wider, new LED lighting. The ponds, obviously, we're going to make those more of a recreational ponds, we have some more fishing opportunity, and we've already been discussing, discussing with the Department of Natural Resources to making those more urban fishing ponds. They annually stock those with trout. We're also working with them to possibly get bluegills, bass, and some other fish in there so that it's more of a recreational opportunity for citizens. Healthy Neighborhood Initiative projects, Tech Miller Park, the Ball Field, that one has been a challenging project this year. We had contractors scheduled to start in May. We had the snowstorm, which then, that site is very wet, we weren't able to get on there, so we delayed the project till July, and we got into the wet fall. So we are about a third of the way done with that project, maybe halfway done, and now we're getting into winter where we can't do some of the concrete work. So that project will go into next spring. One of the donations that was recently on the council agenda, the Oshkosh North Youth Baseball Group donated $4,200 to the city. They worked with us to get a batting cage as part of this project, so you're going to see a batting cage out there, they're working with us, they're providing all the other materials, the steel support posts, the netting and all that, and the $4,200 that they contributed to us is actually paying for the concrete inside the batting cage.
Just a quick question on that, Ray. So these grants and, and different donations and that, so you referenced the $4,200, for example, why wouldn't we see that under like the grants and aids, or where is that?
Just because these are capital improvement projects.
Ah, okay, I'm sorry.
We just keep them out of the operating fund.
Yep, gotcha, okay.
So yes, and also it's, a lot of those are separate fund from the initial project scope, so though, these are above and beyond cost possibly than what was funded through the Healthy Neighborhoods projects. So you're going to see that one continue. Stevens Park, staff worked with that neighborhood association to install some new signs, some tree identification and education signs out there this year. And Roosh Park, we completed the Roosh Park Master Plan this year, and you'll start to see some, in the five-year CIP, we're starting to earmark a few years out for some improvements out there. The Mary Jewel Restroom and Shelter construction, along with the, the lift station that was constructed out there, that was recently completed late this summer, you'll see that fully operational and in use next year. Menominee Park Tennis Courts and Pickleball Courts, again, this was a project that was very well needed, and we're getting a lot of great response, the pickleball players love it. I work closely with both the tennis players as well as the pickleball players involved in the design. They've actually started a fund at the Community Foundation to help with some future maintenance on the site. They know that in seven to 10 years, we may have to do some new color coding or some kind of repairs, so they started a, a maintenance fund endowment at the Community Foundation for us, and they're writing grants and trying to solicit donations for that. And then the Roosh Park Master Plan again. Couple of the big projects that you'll again see later in the CIP. Little Oshkosh, Menominee Park is, is well beyond its age, it was constructed in 1997. It's, it's time, we're seeing this across the country, across the state, where a lot of these leather projects have to be taken down because of safety concerns, maintenance concerns, police concerns with not being able to see, see into those, so it's, it's time for Little Oshkosh to be rehabbed. What we're looking to do with that project is we'll work with, I'm referring to Leathers and Associates, they're out of New York, and that's the firm that the city worked with back in 1997. They come in and help design the project, they work with the kids in the schools and the community saying, what would you like in this specific playground? So it's not your, I want to call it cookie cutter type playground, they can still customize it to what people want to see out there. So we're going to work with a firm, it's called Play By Design, it's actually started by some of the employees that used to work for Leathers, and actually, some of the project managers that were on Little Oshkosh started this company and would be working with us. So our intent would be to have, enter no contract with Play By Design, they would come into the community, work with the schoolchildren, saying, what would you like to see? It would be a custom build again. We would not be doing a community build, we have not seen support from the other civic organizations that had done it in the past, so what we'd be looking to do is contract that out with Play By Design assisting with that local contractor.
What are some of the safety issues and concerns with Little Oshkosh?
The wood deteriorating is the big thing. A, a big piece of it as well is, it's not as easy as coming in and taking a section out and replacing it. It's like a deck at your house that's got different levels, you, you really need to come in and do a complete rehab. We looked at it with this company, just doing certain rehabs of pieces, and it, it wasn't really feasible, just because of, you can't take some pieces out and just automatically slide other pieces in, because they're interconnected so much. Chain bridges that were out there, pieces that are no longer safe or up to safety guidelines that are current. Guidelines change on the playgrounds within every five to 10 years roughly, and because this is now over 20 years old, some of those standards have changed as well.
Is there?
ADA is a big one as well, correct.
Is there any, I don't know, are there, has there been an assessment done to determine whether or not there are sections of it that could be somehow reused or incorporated into the new where perhaps the wood is not, you know, or is still salvageable or reusable?
We actually had an assessment done, came in and did a safety assessment, and one piece that we identified, and you're going to have to help me, is it, it's the big eyeball that's out there, that was one piece.
Which one? The face.
Yeah, there's a face that used to, and that is one piece that we looked at that might be able to be salvaged, but again, that requires some repairs as well because some of those pieces are gone. So we have looked at that, but a lot of it, because it's made out of the wood, the new, the new product going in would be made out of composite material.
I see.
And we would have the poured-in-place rubber surfacing, which helps again with accessibility, and the project will be completely ADA accessible as well.
And the memorial blocks that people invested for the council members would stay?
Yep, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but our hope is that they could probably stay, and then what we're also looking at, because people had either painted or put some time and effort into some of the picket fence drawings and artwork, once or if the project gets approved by the council, we'll start working through some of those details, because people have been contacting us, asking all the questions, so.
It seemed like you did a great job with South Park, when you went through with the memorial trees and things like that, trying to, and Lake Shore too, with the, protecting those investments that other people have made, whether it's cash or just, you know, the mementos, the paintings and things like that. So if you keep up with that, then I would have no concerns with you guys doing that.
Good. So that's our top project, and once we get into the CIP, I will pass around the Parks Board priority list that I provide you every year, but I, I want to focus on operations for you first here. Playground replacement, at this point Steg Bower Park is the project that is still currently in the plan for next year, and that is actually looking to be funded by some of the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative funding. We've already been working with the neighborhood association to start choosing some of the equipment. They're actually doing their own fundraising to add to that, to get some new benches and update some lighting and so forth, so they're doing some additional fundraising to complement that project as well. Bowen Street Fishing Dock renovation, this is another one that has some old wood material on it, and what we'd be looking to do is go in and put composite material down, similar to what's on the Riverwalk, a lot less maintenance, and also just a lot more extended life for products like that. And then West Haven Circle, the park restroom there is, the council has been very supportive, and Mark and the finance directors have, trying to do one restroom a year to get it up to ADA compliance, but also just for energy efficiency and aesthetics. If you recall, some of the restrooms in the past had the, the stainless steel facility similar to jails and prisons, so what we've been trying to do is, once a year, we're trying to get those updated, and the council's been very supportive to do that, so we're looking at West Haven Circle next year.
So is the Beach House Restrooms at Menominee Park, where does that fall in here?
That falls into our general operations figures and our repair and maintenance, and Chad and I, and it's in our strategic plan as well, you'll see that. So that falls into some of the repairs that, in our general maintenance budget. I don't have anything in particular to touch on unless you have questions specifically, but those are some of the highlights for the parks.
Just another question, and that is, with Ann Schaefer then, so 25% for Parks, 50% for Senior Center, do we have something to show like how much grants? Do we have something to show like how much grant funding that position has brought in?
Yep, Ann does that. She keeps records of that, and it'll be in our key performance measures as well as in the senior center. A lot of, a lot of her grant funding and sponsorships come towards the senior center, but you should also see that hopefully in Allen's key performance measures as well as ours. You won't, you won't see it, obviously because 2018 isn't in here, but if you look back in 2016, I think Ann started in 2016. So some of that for the parks possibly attributed to Ann. She did help us. She did receive a grant for the Riverwalk repair behind the leech, a $45,000 grant to help with that repair. And again, it's not noted here, but it's part of a CIP project that helped fund that. But I think you'll hear more once Gene talks more about the senior center.
We'll go into the forestry next on page 125.
I'll start it out and then turn it over to Bill. Again, just touching on some of the links to the city's strategic plan, again, touching or finding promoting and developing public-private partnerships and strengthening our neighborhoods. Bill has worked closely with our planning division in writing grants that help do additional tree plantings in the neighborhood associations. So you'll see that in this document, and you'll see that one, I think it's specifically noted here. Under significant accomplishments, received the Great Lakes Restoration Tree Planting Grant, $10,000. We already received notice that we are receiving a $5,000 grant. You'll see that in 2019 for some additional tree planting. One thing that I've been working with Bill on and him and his staff have completed starting last winter is a tree pruning cycle. They broke the city down into one-fifths and basically came up with a plan that has about 2,000 street trees that they're responsible for in each of those areas. And their goal is to get through trimming of those street trees every year. Obviously, it's weather dependent, and last year they were very successful in getting through their first cycle. So what they do is, we'll still respond to questions of trees being a hazard or too low over the sidewalk or streets. But what it does is helps builds guys plan a little bit more, being more proactive than reactive instead of sending guys out throughout the city. And if people call and ask when their tree is going to be trimmed, we have an idea, and Stacy, our administrative assistant, can help with that. Turn it over to Bill if you want.
Okay, thank you, Ray. As you mentioned, we have been working very closely with planning on implementing a lot of neighborhood tree planting projects. So we're looking at specific association areas that have requested us to plant trees, and it's been a real nice partnership because we've got the residents involved and they'll work with us and Alexa and planning to kind of develop an overall plan. And then, of course, we always have additional areas too that have been requesting it as well. So this, actually, next week, we'll be starting a project down in the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association area, and we'll be using some funds from the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, Taking Root Project funds. And then we also received a Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant to help us offset some of the costs there too. So that was a $10,000 grant. So we've been kind of pooling some of our resources so we're able to do all this work without any public funds. And then it's been a pretty nice alliance with the neighborhoods as well. So we've got another one we're looking at for next year that I put in for a Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant. Again, you know, pending the outcome on that grant application, we'll also be working with the community foundation to kind of use some of the Healthy Neighborhoods funding, Taking Root funding, and then hopefully some DNR grant dollars to facilitate some work in another area. Last year, we worked at the Sawyer Creek Neighborhood Association area in the Roche Park. We did some buckthorn remediation. That property had been pretty much overtaken with buckthorns, so we worked together again with Healthy Neighborhoods and did a lot of mitigation of some of that invasive species that is present there. Also, we've been focusing on emerald ashbore mitigation and treatment. So we've been treating areas on a three-year cycle to protect trees that we think are valuable enough and warrant the expense of the treatment. And then also, we have been removing a handful of trees that have been infested and have other structural issues. So we've been maintaining a pretty good handle on that. We've had some pop-up areas that have been a little problematic, but you know, really I think have managed it fairly well so far. I don't know that we've been hit real bad just yet, but I think through our treatment program, that's helped us to kind of keep it under some level of control. We've got a variety of other projects going on year-round, of course. This year, we've been working on South Park, doing some tree replacement there, installation of some memorial trees, which has helped fill in some of that area that we have lost trees. Also, we've been working extensively on the golf course property too to move memorial trees, as was mentioned earlier, and try to preserve, you know, some of that asset. And the tree pruning schedule has worked out fairly nicely, so you know, we had desirable weather for tree work last year, so we were able to, you know, cover quite a bit of ground. So hopefully, we'll be successful again this year in keeping up with that schedule. And it's nice to have a systematic approach to going around and keeping all the areas well-pruned so that it does eliminate a lot of the chasing that we've done in past years with trees getting lower, having other issues. So this year was a kind of incredible growing season, so we were still chasing a little bit of new growth that was starting to drop down into the streets and sidewalk areas, but it, the schedule has helped us keep it a little more manageable. That'll entertain any other questions if you like.
Just, just a procedural thing a little bit. Under materials and supplies, I see that the budget actually is going down, but I saw an $8,000 increase in the landscape supplies.
Yeah, the landscape supplies also, we handle all the maintenance and the roundabouts and traffic islands as well. And we have never really had a budget for that area. So my staff, you know, it's, you know, we developed actually a schedule of all the areas that we maintain throughout the city. And, you know, it has actually become a fairly enormous responsibility, and the roundabouts and traffic islands are an area that because they are major gateways, we feel a need to continue to make improvements and try to keep those areas looking nice. So we do expect to do some replacements. There's a lot of salt that gets blown into those areas, and we do have some mortality of the plants. We like to keep those replaced and the areas mulched as well.
No, I think they look great, the roundabouts.
And the biggest challenge is, you know, we've been asked over the years, well, can't we get volunteers to do that one? And you see what, one of the biggest complaints we get is from residents not being able to cross the road. Imagine how they're going to get to the roundabout. So Bill and his crew have to take the risk and do it themselves, and you know, they're doing the best job they can, but obviously, the salt really just is hard on those because they're right in the middle of where all the salt goes. Because that's one of the first places that the streets department hits when it's a...
And even though the state required us to put them in, they're not helping us at all maintain them, right?
No.
That's, I guess, I do have a question, I guess, on that, or it may be larger, it may be more department-wide. Seasonal, part-time staff, especially, you know, your summer moors and, you know, the people who are doing the maintenance of the roundabouts and the boulevards, and we're going to talk about Oshkosh Ave at some point and a boulevard in there. And how do we invest in that? And do we have enough staff to keep those things looking the way they should look? Do we have, do we need to, you know, I'm glad I actually see it this year, that there's a budget line for those improvements because previously we haven't had one. How do we keep up on that and just keep up on what we have? That's been a goal of this council, is maintain what we have. But at some point, we're going to keep adding too. How do we fund that?
How we fund it is the question. And I'll let Chad and Bill speak for the maintenance side of things, but we've had this discussion. I think we're at our maximum at this point with the addition of the roundabouts, the medians, the continued improvements to the Riverwalk, all those things. And we love doing them because they look great, but it does fall back to our department. And we feel we're not giving it adequate time. And I think we're to the point now that we seriously need to look at, how can we do that and how can we do it better? I know Bill's looking at the possibility of getting some contractors maybe to help on the roundabouts and see what kind of numbers we get there. Seasonal staff continues to be a challenge, as you know, throughout all the divisions. And I don't see that getting a lot easier. We've talked about our seasonal pay rates. We looked at those this year and bumped them up a little bit, but that really has a trickle up effect when we start looking at increasing our seasonal pay. We're starting to bump up against the full-time pay as well. So it's going to continue to be a challenge, I think. We do have funding for forestry, the foundation through the Taking Root Fund provides $6,000 a year, which essentially covers about two seasonal staff members. And Bill's worked with the community foundation to make sure that is going to remain for a number of years. So, you know, the funding is a big question, and it's a challenge right now. I don't know if you guys want to add it.
I'd just say that, you know, a lot of these areas, you know, clearly require a lot of maintenance. And, you know, I've had discussions with Ray and Chad, you know, about maintaining a high level of quality. And I agree, I think we're kind of at that breaking point. You know, my forestry staff is primarily dedicated to maintaining the trees. We also have historically done horticultural work, which is maybe maintaining the planting beds in the parks and that sort of thing. So we're kind of at our limit where, you know, obviously, we like to work on that horticultural and landscape improvement type work. However, we don't have a lot of available staff always to really keep it up at the level that I would prefer it to be. And I think the community would probably agree on that as well. So I don't know whether additional seasonal staff is necessarily the answer because the timeframe is generally fairly short that they're available, but they do help us out in a lot of different areas. But, you know, so we're looking at, you know, what potential solutions may be out there to try to help us out a little bit to keep it up at a higher level, especially when gateways are, you know, desirable areas, of course, so.
I received a lot of good comments from people about the flower beds at the Lake Fly Cafe, interest to the park. I mean, they're beautifully done and well-maintained. Is that you or?
It is, yes.
They're really quite striking.
We should, should we transition on to the cemetery since Bill is?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Page 189, and then we can come back to the senior center?
I'll kick it off again and then turn it over to Bill. I think this is an area that I can point out that the cemetery tours, if you haven't seen or heard about them, Donna Brodsky, our assistant out there, has really brought those back over the last two years in strong force. Each one of her tours has been full, I believe. She's got one coming up over the Halloween that is full with a large waiting list. People have a great interest in the history of the cemetery, and Donna's doing a great job in helping us to promote that. And it not only gets people out there interested in the history, but it does, we hope, help people understand that there are lots available and helps generate some marketing opportunities for us as well. This is another area where Ann Schaefer has helped out. She's worked with Bill on some promotion materials. She's helped out with some of the special events and some of the tours going on out there. So again, we're using Ann throughout all of our divisions to assist with that. One item, just high level, if you take a look at the transfers up on the revenue side of things, the transfers actually transfer out of the perpetual care fund. This is an area that Mark and Trina and I talk every year about how much of that fund should be used for some of these operations. And I think we're to the point now where we're pretty comfortable, I think, at the level we're at, but I think we're going to have to continue to take a look at that as we try to keep the tax levy support for the maintenance of the cemetery fairly consistent. So that's just to give you a heads up, that's where that transfer is from.
Bill, you may want to mention too that the cemetery is on the National Trust for Historic Preservation, so it's a landmark cemetery in the country.
Since we had the improvements, and I think it was through a grant with the chapel at the cemetery, is it being used more often?
We are taking folks through there as part of the tours. So just to back up a little bit, last year, we received a $30,000 grant from the Kinsel Foundation to do the interior restoration of the chapel structure. That, of course, is a piece of the National Registry Historical Designation as well. So we start out the tour in the chapel. We obviously like to show it off and let people know that it's available for use. The improvements have been very well received. And so, you know, I think that was, that was a big thing that I wanted to accomplish. You know, we had done some exterior work, some roofing work over the past 15 years or so. So we wanted to keep that gem of a building in really high-level condition. So fortunately, we were able to do it with, you know, a very generous gift. So the, I think, one of the things that we've been stressing is, you know, a lot of people drive by the cemetery, but, you know, don't realize that, you know, we do have space available. So part of the tour motivation to do the tours is not only, you know, to encourage the historical examination of the property, but also to get people familiar with it so that, you know, they understand better what we do and that, you know, we really like to keep it at a very high quality of maintenance. And so hopefully then people will also be encouraged to purchase plots and think about us as an opportunity to use a local cemetery. So I think we've also looked at various different ways to better market ourselves, and I think Ann has been very instrumental in helping us develop a plan, and we've got a better social media presence. You know, the tours help that a lot so that, you know, people are out there thinking about us a lot more than they would have. And it's also fairly inexpensive marketing for us. So, you know, we continue to try to keep that to develop, developing so that we further kind of our visibility out there in the community.
Good.
Well, should we transition back to the senior center on page 163?
Hopefully, everybody has met or knows Gene Wollemann, who's our senior services manager. And the one thing I wanted to start off with is to share some historical information with you about the semit, or cemetery, I'm sorry, the senior center.
Big kind of transition.
Budget, yes.
Go from dead to living.
Let's take a look at the handout. Reverse. Actually, can I get a copy back?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we have extras. But what we wanted to do is share with you about a, well, about a 14-year snapshot of the levy history for the senior center. You can see that back in 2004, total budget or total percentage, levy percentage of total budget was about 73%. And going down through the years, it's dropped down. I think if you take a look at 2011, that's where the senior services manager, some of the expenses for his position were coming out of the health services budget because he was overseeing both. So there was less of a need for tax levy support there. But you can see we're creeping the request up to about 59% this year. It's still a lot less than it was 14 years ago, but we've lost a lot of revenue there. If you recall, the last two years, we've talked about Fox Valley Tech no longer offering, no longer offering programs there. We had the ADRC, or I'm sorry, Lutheran Social Services pull out of their adult daycare business, which was two large rental revenues. I think Gene, she can talk about some of the ways that she's helped offset those losses. And not only through some insurance reimbursement programs, but also through Ann and getting sponsorships and donations. And again, it's just an area where we're asking for a little more assistance, but as you will see, the staff is doing a good job as well, trying to keep the program fees steady at this point, but also trying to keep the services high, so.
So a little bit of the accomplishments that were done this year. In January, or last July is when we had gotten notice that the tech was leaving, so we did a lot of discussing on what we were going to do with the space that was provided. So in January, with the help of the... So in January, with the help of the Park Staff, we're able to create a separation with our fitness areas so that we were able to have cardio area and then a strength area. With that, this year, we've seen increase in participation with those areas, as well as changing our fee structure last year to accommodate individuals who can participate in exercise classes as well as workout areas. So about 50% of our participation comes from individuals that are working out in our north building. So we find that that is a need that we need to continue to do to help with the overall health of seniors as they age. Also, this year, our fitness equipment is approximately 13 years old, 14 years old. The lifespan of some cardio equipment lasts about 10. We had a couple of our treadmills go down. So we had asked our friends to help with some support on new fitness equipment. They came through, as well as some donors and community support. So we were able to purchase some new equipment to help with the benefits in those workout areas. So we continue to grow with changing older equipment into better equipment and keep enhancing those areas. Our fitness reimbursement programs come from Medicare. So when you turn 65, you had a benefit of fitness memberships in the community. We have been signed on to two more as of last year. So we've seen that increase in participation throughout this year. And then we will continue with that for 2019 also. So we've gone through the strategic plan with the Park Department, and then that's our future planning for 2019. So those are just some of the highlights that we had for this year. Yes, okay. So the question came with Ann and what she is, helps with us. Ann does a tremendous job. She has kind of gotten the Friends kind of on track of working on a spring appeal, a fall appeal. And as you all know, the Food Truck Fridays that occur in the summer. So in the past, our Friends group just kind of went with some smaller fundraisers. And with Ann's guidance, she's directed them into that part of fundraising. They have been very successful in 2018. We have asked for an increase in their donation for 2019. So at approximately about $14,000 increase from that group. They had approved that quite a while ago. And so going forward, their support to us has been wonderful. And with Ann's guidance, her next step is working with them on a planned giving program. And we currently have one individual that had stepped forward to be a part of that planned giving. So that's another avenue that she wanted to lead the Friends into. So I think that support has been wonderful. Oh, yeah. So in 2018, the Friends' support was 51,300. And next year for 2019 will be 65,000.
Councilmember Paul Maria, you had a question?
Yep. So it looks like then our grants and aids revenue has gone down from 2017 significantly. And then I see on the key performance measures, it looks like our number of new participants and active participants also has decreased. But the total participant visits were increased. Can you reconcile that?
We have individuals who are very dedicated to the center, so they come more often. And then those numbers are going to fluctuate whether or not people are participating or our total numbers, obviously, because of who we are. So we have some that leave us, go into assisted living facilities, and then probably don't come back. The ones that are very active with us, I do believe our medium age is somewhere early 70s. They're coming more often. So you'll see their visits as more often, but possibly less in the number of active participants.
And it looks like the number of volunteer hours is almost cut in half.
We took out the Friends out of our database. They collect that data themselves. We felt that that was their volunteers and their hours. They were all kind of consolidated at one time. So we kind of took the Friends out of the picture of us. So we could just get true numbers of the people that participate with the center. And then they have their calculated hours that they have with the Friends that are participating with all of their activities and hours that they put in.
So then do the Friends volunteer hours, having separated out, do they somehow get like attributed like in-kind hourly rate as donation or how? Go ahead.
I think in the past, like when the Friends had an event, the Food Truck Friday, those hours were being counted in the Senior Center numbers. And it's really not a Senior Center program or event. So I think it's more an actual accounting. So it's not an in-kind back to us because it's their event and they're doing the fundraising.
And they're getting the benefits.
Right. Where they're getting the revenue, we're seeing the offset in the revenue then. Back to your original question, Lori, grants and aids. And if you take a look at miscellaneous, it's more about accounting and changing where accounting things, correct?
Okay.
Just, I don't know, Ray, you can address it, or Jean? Notice you're going down, it's really percentages, but employees are just shifting duties a little bit or what? You had 7.45 in current budget. 19, it looks like you're going down to 7.07. There's some movement for temp employees, assistant activity coordinator.
Yeah. We ended up with, we had an activity coordinator that, we had two employees that were working our front desk areas. One retired. And we just felt like, or I felt that it wasn't an area where I would like to replace. One employee could handle both of those front desk areas, so.
Well, then if I could just go back to the number of participants in both new and active. So that active number of participants excludes new participants, correct? So on page 164, new participants, 688 for 2017. Active participants, 3,197. So is the 688 included or excluded from that 3,000?
When we pull out the numbers of the new participants, our database just says, and you can calculate that. Active participants, it's, those people are probably added in that amount also because it's, you're pulling those out of our database.
So the 688 are part of the 31,007?
Yeah, it's probably part of the 31, but I can clarify that when.
Was it fair to say that about half a million dollars served 3,000 people in 2017?
Yes.
Or also another way, the net cost is about 300,000. And I think that's probably a fair, in terms of what the taxpayers are paying for. So that lowers the cost per participant. It's about, when you take the number of participants, you know, close to 60,000 with about 300,000, it's about $5 per participant. And given what they get when they get there, pretty good return.
I think that steps us nicely into, the Senior Center does have an outside budget. It's where all of the programming is accounted for on page 285. And so let's transition into that fund.
This fund is really a programming fund. You'll see more of the materials and supplies for each of the programs that we offer included here. It's a, it gives the staff an opportunity to add new programs or try new programs. And you'll see that it does have a fund balance, and we'll continue to try to build that fund balance. By having that, it allows staff, if they see a new program come along or they get an opportunity to partner with somebody, gives us more of an opportunity to do that here. You'll see a lot of the significant accomplishments and objectives are the same. This fund is not levy-supported. It's supported by grants and donation, or grants and aids and program fees, some donations and sponsorships.
Okay, now we wrap our discussions up on the Senior Center.
Just one last question. Is there any CIP this year? Are we doing anything with the buildings? Last year, I know we did carpeting. I think we did some other projects. Do we have anything scheduled for this year?
Not in the CIP. I think a lot of the items were taken care of. We do have place markers farther out in the CIP for some of the building improvements. But with Jean coming in, she's really focused on policy procedure at the Senior Center, getting those things in order. And she's also taking a look at the plans that were out there for the building renovations, knowing that fitness and multi-generational, baby boomers, that we may need to take a look at what some of those plans had. So we have placeholders a number of years out.
Okay.
So I have a question regarding the, I guess, the building maintenance and operations. So if we were looking at utilities and contractual services, trying to think where we would capture everything related to the brick and mortar, would you say it's equal between the north and south buildings in terms of maintenance and/or utilities of the brick and mortar component?
We don't capture a lot of the facility maintenance here because facility maintenance staff through John Urban's department, custodial staff and so forth are paid out of facility maintenance budget. So a lot of what takes place, brick and mortar-wise, is in John's budgets.
Okay.
This is more of the programming operational side.
So from the programming and operational side, then let's just take the utility piece of approximately 50,000. Would you say it's equal in terms of usage between the north and south building?
Yes, I would, because they're both open the same number of hours at this point. Really, nothing draws more electricity or utilities out of one building compared to the other.
Right. So there wouldn't really be any increase, right now it's Monday through Friday hours, correct?
Correct.
Like 10 to 4 or something like that?
Eight, eight to 4:15-ish.
Okay. So it really wouldn't add anything because it still has to be heated, et cetera, et cetera. If there were additional hours, like on the weekend or?
Staffing time.
Staffing time, there would be an increase.
And Jean and her staff have been looking at that. And it's something that we've talked about, and she's looking at possibly trying next year, being open a couple of evenings at this point, shifting some staff around so that they come in later to cover some evening hours. And I believe we're looking at trying that a couple of weeknights next year.
But no Saturdays or Sundays?
Not at this point, no.
Ray, I've had that question too, about later hours in the evening for those people who do work on different shifts. I mean, people, you know, 55 do still work.
With the multi-generational programming, can you give us any highlights or pull them out? What you're looking at in terms of increasing our number of participants?
So this past year, we tried a couple multi-generational activities. We did a couple of projects through our art options, as well as our woodshop options. So attendance and participation was not, was lower than what we thought. And then, but one of our larger events that we do with them is called the Senior Connects Program. It's a technology where the high school kids work with the older adults, and that we see success with. We tried with the intergenerational through the spring break timeframe. So it's one of those, depending on trying to really figure out, okay, what do people really want? What do they really want to see? A lot of discussions with the nighttime opportunities. We felt that trying a couple of programs at nighttime, we would see the interest. We're trying to be cautious not to jump into something, then all of a sudden we have to back off. So if we try little by little, then we can see if there's interest to increase as time goes on. So that's kind of our strategic approach right now, is to really see if there is some interest in an evening-type activity.
Just out of curiosity, has there been any discussions with, I don't know, for example, library or museum about, I don't know, any cross-programming or anything along those?
We did work with the museum, with those standees, those World War I, with that program. We did talk about, they have a program that's the history of Oshkosh, which Carla was going to come in and do a presentation at the center. So little programming aspects that way. I'm not quite sure exactly if you had anything in mind with, I mean, it's always open to do collaboration with libraries and museums because those are of interest for lots of people, so.
Just been seeing how some of, some other cities across the country have been doing some cross-programming, you know, either between, or, you know, sharing of facilities between libraries to kind of promote some of the intergenerational interaction, I guess. And even some creative things like satellite police and fire-type preventative locations. And that with Senior Centers, obviously, that's a very unique situation. But I just was curious whether or not there was any of that in the works or?
Yeah, and I mean, we do a lot of collaboration with the police department, with Coffee with the Cops.
Right, National Night, or?
Right, things like that. But it's always available. And Jane Wells, our program supervisor, can definitely, you know, look at all of those different program options with them too, so.
Do you find that the Senior Center sometimes is either in competition or overlaps with other services in the community, such as through like the YMCA or some of the other facilities?
I think there's, in my opinion, I think the different opportunities in the community are healthy for everybody, no matter what it is. The center is a place where people come to socialize with their peer groups. I, to work out with your peer group sometimes is a lot less threatening. I think you get a buddy system a little more established when you're in a larger group with peers. Your quality of life working and socializing with your peer groups, I think, is healthy. It's, I find it successful. I don't, but yet going out in the community and participating in other aspects of what the community has to offer is also a very healthy avenue for everybody, so.
You do a lot of programs, like at Easter time, you're working with the Parks Department for different programs that are bringing kids into the, you know, something with a breakfast with a bunny or Easter bunny type of thing, so.
Another program that I wanted to touch on a little bit too, as far as intergenerational and cooperation. Chad, with our zoo coordinator, also has that person coming over to the Senior Center, bringing, what's the bird's name?
Kiana.
Kiana, bringing her over for visits and talking to them about some animal care and bringing in different aspects that way. And you had asked about the YMCA. The Senior Center actually does some collaboration with the YMCA in programming as well. And I would support what Jean says, and Jean came to us from the YMCA, so you can see both sides. But I think there's really a need for both. I think that comfort level that Jean speaks about is important. And I think, especially when you're a little bit older of the population that comes there, I think it's really important.
And I guess, I just had one last question, and that was, it looks like the number of rentals has also gone down by about half. I assume that's facility rentals. And Jean, you and I, when I took our tour earlier this year, we got to know each other a little bit, just kind of briefly talked about how the, there is a certified kitchen there in the south building. And from what I understand from Andre Hoy at GOE DC, there are a number of, you know, maybe small entrepreneurial, well, there is interest in utilizing these rental certified kitchens. And that gets used primarily for what right now? It's kind of a minimal use, would you say, that certified kitchen there?
We have a contract with AdvoCap that runs our meal program. We have a contract with AdvoCap that runs our meal program daily. So, they utilize that kitchen space from 10 till 1. And then, we also host several different luncheons that we, special events that occur in that space also. The option of, I do believe, an individual requested early morning timeframe, but did not follow through and book us on anything, so.
But there's room, I guess, my point is, there is room in the schedule if there was a desire, or that was known, that that could be rented out for that purpose, kind of as a, what do they call them? Not incubator, I'm trying to think of the word, for some of the, you know, mom-and-pop-type, food startup-type things to potentially bring in revenue and more rental, facility rental. Is that, there's room in the schedule for that?
There definitely could be, evenings, weekends. I think our fee structure doesn't specifically just have a price on just renting the kitchen, or the commercial kitchen, per se. It's also included with the, with the room breakout. So, probably reevaluating our rental options and fees might be something that, we did kind of discuss a little bit, because we, we did see a decrease in, in that. But that is an option. I mean...
There may be even a potential, I don't want to volunteer the farmer's market, but, you know, maybe there is some kind of opportunity for some of those baked goods and salsas, and who knows? I'm kind of curious. And I think that the cities or the communities that have instituted that have had really good success with those. And I believe the closest one to us is maybe Appleton, or north of the, in the Fox Cities. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions in relation to the senior center? Okay. And I think that would lead us nicely into the Leech, on page 193. This will begin our discussion on what we consider more revenue-driven functions at the parks. There are limited amounts of levy in these funds, but they do have a large revenue component as well.
I'll kick it off, and then if there's questions for Jenny or Chad. Chad really takes care of the, the maintenance side of things, and Jenny does the programmatic side of things. Through our budget discussions and putting this budget together, we wanted to make sure the council is aware that, that we're struggling at this point to put true maintenance and CIP costs into this budget. Really, what this budget costs or covers is the programmatic side of things, and some of our seasonal staff for those programs. So, that's something that we're going to have some, some further discussions on with both Trina and Mark on, do we have to roll some of these costs into this fund, or do we have to look at some of the future CIP and major maintenance costs being budgeted in the, the parks budget? So, if you recall, recently, the council approved a budget, budget transfer, I think, budget amendment to this fund, so that it, we're basically starting at a zero fund balance. If you do not recall, when the city started taking this operation on back in 2008, 2009, from PMI, there were a number of concession equipment pieces that were purchased. And ever since then, the fund has been in a negative. I think there was hope that there were going to be large concerts that would help get that balance to the, the plus side. But we're finding that more of our programs are focused on family, keeping it low-cost and affordable to the community. So, I just wanted to give you that little bit of background and what we're looking at for the future on some of these budgets. But Jenny can talk a little more on programs.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. So, at the Leech, we do several different programs down there for families in the community. We have our six concerts that we do, our Tuesday night concert series, which is a sponsored event. We have seen tremendous growth in that this year. I don't know if anyone had a chance to come down, but we definitely doubled the numbers. We added food trucks last year, so it was a really nice thing to add. We're not doing our own concessions. The food trucks are doing the food, and they, they pay to be there each week as well. So, that series has been phenomenal this year. People were very happy with the food trucks, with the bands, just, you kind of see, you know, some families come a little bit earlier, and they'll eat with the kids, and they'll play on the bounce houses, and play the yard games, and they might even leave. And then, the next crew comes in to just listen to the music and get some food. So, it's really a good mix of people. You will see the same people down there, week after week, just sitting under a tree, just loving, you know, loving the environment. So, that's great to see. And then, we still work on that. You know, Ann and I work together, trying to find out how to really get it out there, because you still hear at the end of the six weeks, "Oh, I never knew you guys did that," you know. But we have it everywhere. You know, we don't know really where else to put it. But we continue to work on really getting it out there so people know. And that is a free community event as well. We also do four movie nights. Those are all free to the community as well. Those are all sponsored by community members. So, those, we had a couple weather issues this year, so one of them, we weren't able to reschedule because it was late in the year. But typically, again, we have the bounce houses down there. We have entertainment, just a great place that's free for people to come with the kids and hang out. And then, our other big event down there is our Touch a Truck event, which, again, is a sponsored event, so it brings in money through concessions. We added this year, having food trucks down there for that event. We find with the issues of staff, it's really hard to do concessions well with those huge community events when we're really short people. So, it's really been kind of nice, less worry of serving people and serving them well, letting the food trucks do it, who are really used to the crowds, and somehow, they figure out, you know, most of them are business owners, so they do it themselves a lot of the time. But that's been a nice transition, just to kind of let our staff do other things that we might want to do at the event, and not have to worry about concessions. So, again, all 11 events, the Leech, were fully 100% sponsored by community members, so it was no cost to us. And we bring in money typically off the food trucks or the concessions. So, that's kind of the summer at the Leech, if anyone has any questions about that stuff.
I have a question on the rental revenue, Jenny. So, it looks like we had about a fifth of the rental revenue in 2017 over 2016. And is all 23,000 of that decrease attributed to that late payment in 2018?
Yes.
What event was that?
Waterfest.
Chad, I got a question for you. 195, page 195, it looks like our contractual services are going to go way up. What drove that increase? Or what was driving that increase?
Biggest thing in contracted services are, we're going to be doing a major improvement with the, there's an electrical trough that goes between the stage and the crow's nest. It's spalling concrete and going, and we got to do a major completion to that.
Oh.
So, it's a, it's a major trip hazard, things of that nature, accessible items that we have to address.
Okay. And then, it looks like every other year or so, if you go down on materials and supplies, this year, we got 1,500 planned for that, where last year, we had no money budgeted.
Um...
It'd be 65.
589.
On 185.
Well, which one did you say? I'm sorry, Steve.
It's 6550 under materials and supplies.
Yep.
Under total fixed charges.
Yep. Usually, we'll go through different things we have for appliances through there. If one goes, like, we try to replace a freezer. If we run into those issue, a fridge or a small appliance for our events that we have.
And that's the same thing for concessions, too, I can't get this equipment. Okay.
And then, Steve, going back to your 6401 question, you'll note in, I think it's noted on page, the first page, that Jenny and Chad are hoping to get a sponsorship for a major event. So, $15,000 in that 6401 would pay for that contracted service?
Oh, okay.
Hoping to get a sponsorship.
Big fee or something like, kind of like, almost?
Yes, just to get an event here, a concert here. But then, we'd have, hopefully, a donation or a sponsorship for that event. And it wouldn't take place unless we had that.
Do you know, is the attendance at Summerfest up, down, flat?
Waterfest?
Waterfest.
Waterfest, Waterfest.
I can't answer that. I, I don't have the numbers, but...
How many, how many weekends, or how many nights do they do?
Uh, 12, I believe. They, yeah, they originally were at, boy, when I started here, 16 or 18 shows, I believe.
Nine weeks.
Is there...
Nine weeks.
Right, nine this year.
Is there an expectation that under the key performance measures, you would begin to capture the attendance at the Leech for different events?
Parks Department-sponsored or all events?
All.
All events?
All users of the facility.
We can try.
Or is it already captured, the parks end of it, in your other numbers?
Um...
Or parks in general?
When Jenny reports to the Parks Board, she gives us specific numbers of the sponsored events.
We can definitely add that. Jenny tracks those, as far as the Tuesday night concerts, movie nights, and Touch a Truck. That's something we can easily add. Jenny keeps track of those.
The Parks part, but what about the other ones? Is there a way that we, do we have a counter, or...
There is no counter, so it's...
Free event.
Yeah, it's really going to, I think that one might be a challenge, because we've got private event weddings, or private event concerts. Waterfest is generally, they do their best guest estimate. Irish Fest, same thing.
That was there in September.
Yep. So, it, that one may be difficult. We can definitely do our own programs. We do a pretty good job of tracking that.
Pretty similar, too, with the special events, too, without the community trying to rate the attendance base. We go off the average is what people help, you know, provide us as an estimate to go off of. If they have the actuals, it's great, but at least give us a baseline of where to go from.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. At least some kind of baseline estimate to, at least, I mean, it would seem a natural KPI for, for that facility.
Apologies to another event, I forgot. The Kids from Wisconsin in 2018 as well. We had that, which was very well-attended and also a sponsored event for the community, so I forgot that one.
Plus, we did unity and community. That was...
Yep.
Well, well-attended.
Was that like 500?
Probably 700 people.
What we find, you know, through the years with all these events, is, we used to have a small fee for movies, or a small fee for different things. But you really find, when you do that, it turns people away, even if it's a minimal fee. It does turn people away. So, getting these events sponsored by community people, and then making the money in the concessions, we make more money, actually, for ourselves. And it brings more people in that can just come with their family. It doesn't cost them anything, so.
So, where are the weddings going, just out of curiosity, if there was a decrease in weddings for rentals?
A lot of them are going back to the Convention Center and Hotel.
Oh, okay.
We used to have, we used to have, where they'd have their outdoor wedding by us, and then go over to the Convention Center Hotel. But now, because Convention Center's more tense and keeping the events there. And weddings for us don't bring a whole lot of money.
Right.
We're looking at $100 for the gazebo, or $500 for a day, so it's not a lot of revenue.
And there's more venues.
There's more venues.
Correct, yep.
Well, we could get her on... Howard's opening again with, they have a music lineup that they're, they're intending to push hard on with their business plan. And the arena, the Grant, the Grants, improved programming over the years as well. It's, there's a lot of music, music events.
Coney's Concerts.
Concert Stadium.
Outdoor Ritz.
Rock USA Concerts, and all of those, that this community...
Because they're going to be able to play Champion, or we can't.
Yeah, the outdoor, the weather is changing.
Yeah.
Climate change.
And we just thought like earlier, what's summer?
We move on.
We can, and weather brings us nicely into the pool.
You were trying to transition, keep us going.
On page 197, we have the Pollock Community Waterberg.
Let me get to my page notes here.
But you're keeping that track, yeah.
All right. The pool, again, you can see we've kept the net levy support for this budget consistent, and we intend to try to continue to do so. This is another fund where we do rely heavily on the community foundation, the endowment that was originally set up at the foundation when the pool was constructed. There was a million-dollar maintenance endowment set up there. So, we're able to tap that fund for about $50,000 roughly each year. So, we get $50,000 for some of the maintenance items at the pool. And then, our agreement with the school district, that they provide the lifeguard services, they provide us a contribution of $40,000 each year. And in turn, we turn around and pay them for the lifeguard services and their staff. So, that's, those numbers are reflected in some of the revenues as well. We did have a good summer, with a warm summer. Just let you know, in 2017, we had about 43,000 visitors to the pool. 2018, we had 51,000. And next year, with the...
Pathfinders.
The Pathfinders Group coming back. They come back every five years. They use our facilities very heavily, and they work with us on some daily admissions. And we see a large jump in when they are in town for that week as well.
So, right, along those lines, I think, last year in the budget, we talked about the need for some increase in some of, I want to say it was some of the seasonal help, because it seems like the last couple of years, concessions have had to shut down early or facilities because of a lack of availability of seasonal help. Do you think some of the decrease in concession sales is related to that? Or are we looking at doing an increase to that minimum wage for those seasonal help to try and, I guess, incentivize them to stick around a little longer?
We actually did increase it for this year. That was part of our seasonal plan with HR and payroll. I think we were fairly well-staffed at the pool on our side. I know that the recreation department was struggling to get lifeguards early on, and that's mainly when we may shut down, either early in the season or late, because a lot of the students are either going back for college, or they're in athletics, which start first part of August, which then puts the rec department in struggle mode to get staff down there. So, I think we did okay at the pool, as far as, as far as I know.
And I think, as you can see there for 2018 or estimate, I mean, it's so weather-related at the pool. In 2017, we did not have a good summer. It was very cool, a lot of rain, which plays a big, you know, into who's coming to the pool and what they're spending. And as you can see, this year, we're up to the estimate of 35,000. We had a great summer. It was hot. So, that makes a big difference with the weather there, certainly. And as far as our staff for concessions and admissions this year, this is the first year that we did hire 15-year-old staff. So, over half of our staff up there were 15-years-old. So, of course, that presents some challenges, but also a really positive thing, because hopefully, we can keep them through all their high school years, and maybe even to a couple years of college. So, it just takes a little bit more, it's their first jobs, they've never worked before. But, you know, mom and dad make sure they're there, and they make sure they drop them off. So, it was, it was a good summer for staff, but half the staff up there was definitely young this year for the first time, so.
Okay. So, if there's no additional questions, we'll go to page 289, which is the parks revenue facilities. This would include the facility of the zoo.
All right. I will kick this off, and because Jenny and Chad play roles in all of these. For new council members, just to give you an idea, this budget accounts for a number of facility areas, and I can go through those for you. The zoo, boat launch facilities, amusement rides, concession areas in mainly Menominee Park, or all of Menominee Park. We have some vending, vending machines and so forth. Miller's Bay, the mooring program. Menominee Park, the special events that Jenny puts on. Lake Fly Cafe. So, all of those budgets are rolled in, up into here. We keep those separated by project numbers. So, when we have expenses or revenues come in, they are, you know, separated out by project numbers for each of these areas. So, that gives you an idea of what's all in this budget. Couple of items that I want to touch on, we spoke with you last year about an eagle exhibit at the zoo. We have, in this year's budget, we had $75,000 coming out of our zoo fund to fund, to fund 50% of that project. At the time, the project was estimated at about $150,000. We've been working with C.R. Meyer to give us some updated costs on this. And because of the steel prices and the tariff scares, that number has jumped considerably. We're now looking at a project cost of about $225,000. So, what I'm suggesting is, we take out of our zoo account another $75,000 next year to put in addition to this year's 75. And I'm working with the community foundation and other members in the community to raise that additional 75. We're working with the Zoo Society and a couple other organizations. And I feel pretty confident that we're going to have the additional money raised by the end of this year. So, my hope and my goal is by the end of December, we will have everything raised outside of the $150,000 now that would come from our zoo fund, so that we can get materials ordered and have that project starting in the spring. So, you'll see those numbers, and that's why some of the expenses and revenues look a little deflated and inflated during the year. And then, another project I want you to be aware of, we are suggesting or recommending that we get our communication service into Menominee Park, which services these facilities. And if you take a look on page 202, under a lot of the capital outlay, that's where those costs are shown. And, stuff, 292, I'm sorry, 292.
I mean, 292, right?
292, yes.
Yeah, not 202.
Me, 292, right?
292, yes.
Yeah, not 202.
My, I didn't put my readers back on, so I'm reaching that age. So to give you an idea, we do not have internet service in the zoo or in Menominee Park at this point, so we don't have internet service to the lakefly, to the zoo buildings, to the amusement area and so forth. What we've been doing is working with our electric division and Tony Newman through IT to come up with a cost to get the infrastructure from the water filtration plant across the street on Merritt, get it into the park, up to the Lakefly Cafe. And then what we can do is then have internet service and we can get security cameras on the facility. We had a number of vandalism and theft issues at not only the zoo, but around Little Oshkosh and so forth. So what we're also looking to do as part of that cost, we'd be getting some surveillance cameras mainly on the zoo facility and some of the concession buildings. What we're able to do then, once we have the internet service to the lakefly, we're then able to get it to shoot wireless over to the zoo maintenance building, a couple of other facilities. So it really helps us get onto a better communication system and surveillance system down there.
You want to point out that the zoo society raises the funds for the education coordinator and that entrance to the zoo is free because of the Herrenberg family, so.
Yes, Tom and Penny contribute $65,000 a year to keep the zoo free. And as, as the mayor had pointed out, the zoo educator position is actually funded through the zoo society. They provide a donation to us every year and that's their primary role is to help us provide education as well as fundraising for new exhibits and improvements at the zoo.
292, 7216, your, your 2018, a lot of 147,000, didn't spend it, we're putting 150 now. Does that go back to any of the eagle exhibit you were just talking, that's what that was?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm open or Jenny for any questions? I actually want Jenny to talk a little bit more about the program because we just had Zuluine Boo and she has some good news on that.
Yeah, so for our zoo, kind of the three major events we do in the zoo each year are our exciting day at the zoo, which is an Easter event with the kiddos. We do the breakfast with the bunny portion over at the senior center and then the kids come out to the zoo afterwards. We also have a snooze at the zoo event and then we have our Zuluine Boo. We just wrapped up with that and even though Saturday was probably the coldest Zuluine Boo ever on record.
It was cold.
It was, yes, snowing and freezing. We still in a two-day total brought in over $16,000 for the zoo. So a five-year total, we brought in over $75,000 for the zoo just with that one event. So that's not counting the exciting day at the zoo or the snooze, so that's really exciting. Our best years were 2015 and 2016 where we had both days that were nice, you know, whatever it is, 40, 50, 60 degrees, no rain, no snow, no Packer game. So those were, you know, kind of upwards of 4,000 people, but this year with having, with having a rough Saturday, we still though, we brought in over 3,000 people in the two-day event and over $16,000 for the zoo, so that's really exciting. We also kind of really restructured our snooze at the zoo this year, so that was very fun. We actually had a guy come in who did, learned a fish program with the kids and he gave all the kids a free fishing pole and a free t-shirt and taught them how to cast and, you know, hook things up. So every year we try to, you know, a lot of these, Zuluine was 16th annual, so you know, some events kind of die off, that one just keeps on getting bigger and bigger. But a lot of the events that we do every year, we try to find new and exciting ways to, you know, when people come back, it's not the same thing. So it was a great year for those events at the zoo and we continue to look forward to raising money to, to build exhibits, so.
Just one thing too to add with the, with Jenny in regards to the zoo education programs that are being offered that we partner with the zoo society on, that, that's a big initiative ours of restructuring some of the programs this over this course winter, work on our marketing schemes going into January, February to coincide with the other items happening around the community to help drive more attendance down to the zoo for those. We've had a great increase over the past couple of years and I think with some fine tuning, we're going to be able to hopefully supersede that going forward. So we're also looking forward to that here in the next year or so as well.
Well, Chad, I'm glad you bring that up because I was just going to ask, so it looks like we had a counter malfunction in 2017, so we don't know what the zoo attendance was.
Correct.
But I assume that got fixed that year and do we have 2018 numbers?
We, we have a 2018 number that we're working with. We have an electroc or infrared counter in the entrance area to go from. We're trying different positions to how that works or captures. Prior to that, we used to have a turnstile and the turnstile would malfunction numerous as well, or people would come through the ADA gate that wouldn't count people to come through. So we also rely on our concession attendance when they're there, which they're not there at nine in the morning, they start at 11 o'clock, so we're trying to capture more people going into there. I'm looking at different measures, there's a whole different area for a zoo entrance gate that should be implied, installed down there to work from, to come up with better means of tracking attendance in and out of there. Jenny does a great job with her events, now it's the day-in, day-out users to make sure we capture those. As far as a great number going into 2018, I don't have a great number for you, knowing that the infrared thing is working, we're tracking what it is.
So was the malfunction the entire year of 2017? We have no numbers for 2017?
Unfortunately, what happens with that, that due to vandalism unfortunately, like it'll be taken down or someone will take it and turn it straight up and you know, like Chad said, staff is supposed to be checking that every day, but you know, in 2017, there was a lot of days that at the end of the day, that thing was just turned up to the sky. You know, even though it's high, that most can't get to it, somehow they figure out how to monkey up there and, and, and turn it up, you know? So we really lost numbers and have a hard time finding something that will work without people messing with it unfortunately.
I mean, that seems like isolated incidents. Do we have no numbers?
About 100,000.
Over two years, we have like no numbers.
But with the fact that we have a donation that covers the cost of people coming in, as long as people are using it, that's what counts. Cause we're not losing money that way.
I did receive a text from my four-year-old grandson a couple of minutes ago. He's a frequent user. He was asking about the merry-go, merry-go-round. Don't want to put you guys in the spot, but I've had questions from people.
Just to back it one minute, we do have some numbers, but for instance, a day that it was beautiful out and just by being in the zoo, we know there was hundreds of people. On the reader, it would have said like 17 that day. So unfortunately that's what.
So we could give you a number, but it would have absolutely no.
Reflection on the.
Comparison purposes, but it's going to be significantly less than 100,000.
Yeah, Jenny's staff, when they come in, they record what the number is or when they leave for the night, but we're not comfortable with that tracking system and I've asked Chad to make sure that that is completed before next year because we need to have a decent number there, so.
Yeah, to go two years and not be able to track, that's kind of an extended period.
Mayor, as far as the carousel goes, that's a project that we probably are to the point where we're not going to be in the merry-go-round business because it needs about $125,000 in repairs. We don't think we would find the support to get that dollar amount. Plus if you go online, you're able to look and find some for purchase for about 60 to $75,000. We're finding that the amusement rides are to the point where they're costing us more than we're possibly bringing in. The water rides, on the other hand, which are less maintenance, are bringing in larger revenues. So we've had some internal discussions that we're probably going to be bringing to the parks board in the near future, the recommendation that we look at possibly selling the carousel based on the cost of repairs and then see what we can get out of it. And then we're looking at some other options for some recreational opportunity there in that space.
And repair estimates on a carousel were taken about two years ago and I'm already concerned knowing how the eagle exhibit was from the plan from 2015 of how that increased to where the carousel might fall right now. That's a concern of mine.
And it's taking up real estate and storage too, right?
It is, yes.
Some other departments I think have their eye on that spot.
Kids like to write on it.
But there, what I'll say in regards to the, to that component, there's a historical need out there and a group to work with that we can research and find out good avenues if that's what's decided to move on from that, that might want to restore that someplace or purchase it. The last communication I had, I believe was with a person down in Waukegan that restored one that was a 1947 model and I believe ours is a 1956 or vice versa. I'm trying to remember because there are similar components at that time going through there. So there is a whole network of people out there that I do plan to reopen a conversation with of what they're doing or where they've been with these, because there is a need, people do have a, an interest in those, so.
They restored the one in Madison. It's beautiful, but it's huge.
I think this is another opportunity to engage the community, to see what the community would like to see down there, if we are going to either expand or if it's water recreation or if it's some other form. Because it's, again, we talk about the parks belonging to citizens, the citizens and the kids use it.
And we do.
Some type of survey wouldn't, wouldn't be a bad idea.
We do have some of that information in the Menominee Park master plan as well as the corp when we did an update, so.
There's kind of a question for parents, not guys like you, you and I.
No.
Don't grandparents count?
Higher more.
That's true.
Baseball and softball.
I raised the question, yeah.
Okay, so page 295 is not offering a budget. This is a small budget, which sometimes the revenue is for park creation. It comes off of revenue from the inspection, so no budget there, which would then bring us into the proposed golf budget on 297.
Can you roll back to 295, just one quick question? When we have payment in lieu of, for example, when the, the extension of, I call it Roosevelt, but the Wezenberg development, you know, when they made a payment in lieu of, where's that flowing?
That's, that's this budget here.
Okay.
And you'll see the expense in 2018 is when the property out on Clairville and Ninth is being developed and was dedicated as parkland. It was ag property at that time and when it's now dedicated as parkland, that changes its use and we got an invoice from the county saying you are now the owner, you owe for this transition cost. So I've worked with Alan Davis and his staff so that in the future, that becomes the responsibility of the person dedicating the land. So that was an unexpected cost on our part this year, but your question is, this is the fund for the fee in lieu of land dedication.
Where it flows through.
Correct.
So this would be a question then for you, Trina, so for example, the donation we received from Ash Corp or the Park Trail, for example, that's not a parkland dedication fee, that was like just this gracious generous gift. That doesn't go through this though, correct?
Correct, yep. That would actually be reseeded in the 323 fund where the capital project's going to construct as a funding source.
Any other questions on that fund? Otherwise we can jump into the, the golf course fund, which will still be in operation next year. The golf course fund will be in operation. We do still have a full-time staff member and some seasonal staff out there, basically mowing, doing some weeding and some other just general maintenance work. So that's the, the majority of the costs here. You'll see we are including $50,000 for the park master plan. If this budget's approved, we will be working on that master plan. I would expect it'll take all of next year to complete that. And then there's just general, some general expenses in here for some of the utilities and some minimal costs for supplies and materials if we need, need those.
When do you anticipate the master planning to begin?
Shortly after budget adoption, we would send out a request for proposals and I would expect that shortly after the first of the year, we could bring forward a contractor. It'll be one of our top goals for next year.
And the staff that's currently out there, there's enough work that warrants their staff, that staff being directly there only, that they're not being used or available to use on other, well, you've got a lot of lawn to mow.
Right, and yes, we do pull them and use them in other areas, but to give you an idea, when we first started mowing this year, this was not doing the tee boxes and fairways, it was taking our staff about 30, 32 hours to complete the mowing out there. So that wasn't including all the areas that need to be mowed, so it's a full-time job plus somebody to do some trimming and other things that need to be done out there.
Just wondering at what point do, probably in the 2020-ish is when we roll that into just the regular parks department.
Yeah, we've had some discussions about how we handle that.
Eventually we're gonna have to do something.
Depending on what the plan calls for, but it will no longer be a golf course.
Yeah.
At that point, it's, what is it and?
I think to be true to the purpose of the, the golf fund here is that we shouldn't be using the resources, essentially the proceeds of the sale to maintain this much longer.
Correct.
Once the decision's made on what to do with it through the master planning, then I think it does need to go over to parks and, or not. I think it should now because it's not functioning as what it is. No one could go play golf there. Correct. Council said it was going to be a park, so we might as well.
It's already been designated a park.
Been designated. Yeah. So we have to make that transition. Cause it's kind of a, I know, slap in the face of the golfers to keep putting it in the budget as a golf course when it's not a golf course. It's really just the fund and, and it's really, what was the term we used? More of a transition.
If we did that this year though, that's a, what, how much swing onto the?
143.9.
143.9.
Expenditure restraint.
Expenditure restraint then puts a, puts a crimp on the, on the other.
But we can't let it last forever. I mean, this, your points are well taken. We have to, we have to transition out, but this is just probably our last transition year.
Trina? Ready to jump into CIP?
That would bring us into the CIP. The parks start on page 25.
What's the page, I'm sorry.
25.
25.
All right, what I will share with you now is the advisory parks board prioritization that they looked at back in May of this year. Again, it's annual process that, that we do with the board. A lot of these projects are directly out of our corp. We take a look at the high priority projects or projects that we may have some alternative funding source that can help get the project done. So you can take a look at the list that was provided by the parks board and then, a lot of these projects I have talked about in our parks department budgets, you can take a look, Menominee Park, Little Oshkosh, that rebuild. We did previously borrow $100,000, I believe back in 2014, that is still in the Little Oshkosh fund. Our intent was to work on fundraising with the community foundation and some of the civic organizations. We do have a small fund through the Rib Fest organ, or through the Rib Fest event at the community foundation, but not a whole lot of money. I am going to be working with, if this is approved, with Carleen and the community foundation to do some additional fundraising, to set up a maintenance endowment over at the, the foundation because we know that if we put port in place rubber surfacing and a new playground in, it's going to need some, some assistance in the future. And when Little Oshkosh was completed back in 1997, there was a small fund set up at the foundation for some of that future maintenance as well. The other point that I want to make on this, the $400,000 in addition to the 100,000 was actually $400,000 we had earmarked in 2019 for a storage, building and shelter facility on the north side of Rainbow Park. Part of the thinking behind that was with the golf course, being able to have winter storage inside that building for the carts. Obviously that need is no longer there and with the changing of both Rainbow Park on the north side and the former Lake Shore site, when I brought it to Mark and Tree and I said, we have this $400,000 earmark for a park project, I would suggest we keep it for Little Oshkosh because that is the top project that we need. So hopefully that helps give you an idea on some of that funding. West Haven Park restroom update, as I talked about, again, what we do is send our staff in, we pretty much dismantle the inside and then we have a contractor come in, put new partitions, new high energy efficient facilities, lights and so forth, and it'll be ADA compliant. Steg Bower Park, it's in here and it says previously borrowed for, the council did approve this as part of the Healthy Neighborhoods projects a couple of months back, so we're again, working with the neighborhood association, they're doing some additional fundraising. I would expect we will be working on this project over the winter into the spring. Oaks Trail paving, Oaks Trail is on the north side of Menominee Park, essentially the horseshoe road that goes through there, very bad shape. What we would be doing is working with the streets department on a new asphalt roadway in there. Essentially this is covering material costs and then the streets department staff helps us with that project, similar to what they do out at the cemetery facility. Bowen Street Fishing Dock, we talked about that. I'd be looking at, it's a $30,000 request. I believe we can secure about 15,000 in donations. What we'd be doing is again, replacing the wood structures with composite materials. Final project on page 26 is the park master plan for the Lake Shore site at estimating $50,000.
And you said this would be going out to, for RFP probably shortly, right?
Once the budget's adopted, I can have an RFP done fairly quickly and money's approved for J. Once the budget's adopted, I can have an RFP done fairly quickly, and money's approved for January. My hope is then we could start off January, late January, possibly February, depending on, you know, when we get that consultant on board.
Are you anticipating Rettler being one of the respondents today?
I would expect they will be, but we will be opening it up to other consultants as well.
Okay, so page thirty-one?
Actually, twenty-eight, who did we have? You're right, thirty-one. I was looking at the line above you. Thirty-one is actually on thirty-two on the top. Riverside Cemetery Roads Repaving. This is, my, am I on page, because mine is?
I think we maybe have different books. We're on thirty-one.
I have a different book, so it's thirty-one or thirty-two. Cemetery Road Repaving. This is a every-other-year project that, again, we work with the Streets Department for improving the roads out at the cemetery. This is covering materials, and then the Streets staff will come in with their equipment and help us to complete certain sections of Riverside Cemetery Roads. Every Other Year is the request we have on that.
Our last page would be, our page forty-one, it would just be vehicle replacements in the Parks Department.
Yes, we have a number of pieces of equipment for the Forestry Division this year that have really been pushed back in the CIP, probably the last four to five years, based on other priorities that were at that time. But as a department, we are really pushing for our top project being the aerial lift truck. This is our large bucket truck that is used for all of our tree, major tree trimming and tree removals. We use it also. It'll give us the opportunity to use it at some of our ball fields. In the past, the existing truck isn't large enough to reach up to those lights, and we had to contract that out. Our new truck would allow us to not have to contract that service out. And it's an old piece of equipment that, again, is just used extensively, and it's our top priority for this year for equipment. Going with that is our cab-over-chip truck. Essentially, what this is, a, the truck that we pull be, or the cab that we pull behind, which we blow the wood chips into during our tree removal program. Again, it's an older vehicle, nineteen ninety-nine. Stump grinder, this is a nineteen ninety-five piece of equipment. Compact excavator and a tilt bed trailer. This is an item that would replace a John Deere small backload, backloader that we have, that we haven't been able to utilize as much. The compact excavator is something that we could use in a number of divisions, not only in the parks, but out at the cemetery and some of the tight quarters that we work out there. It would be a bit more advantageous for us to use in those situations. And then the final one is a pickup truck with liftgate. It's a two thousand five vehicle. So, can answer any questions that you might have?
And these are by far the worst of the worst. Ray could double the number of vehicles and be justified in all of those, but it's just a matter of what we can afford, so.
Didn't we just approve two new van of some sorts, I think, recently?
Yes, that was for purchase for a TradesTech van, like the old bread trucks, like a straight van. Yes, you just did approve one, and thank you.
Yeah, the aerial lift truck.
I heard.
The aerial lift truck is one that, again, because of the price tag, it has been pushed back a number of years, but we really impressed upon Mark and Trina. It needs to happen at this point.
Well, that's a dual use, right? Can forestry use that lift truck, too, or is that strictly for you guys?
No, this is forestry. This is throughout our division, plus we, we use it, other electric division will use it at times, so there's other cross-departmental.
A normal electric lift doesn't go nearly as high enough as this one would.
How often would that be used, and I'm assuming you already did this analysis, but is there any benefit to just renting when needed or leasing or?
Now, this one is pretty much used, I can't say on a daily basis, because tree trimming takes place this time of the year through March. So, it's used during those months of the year, but it is used in the off months for the large tree removals, storm damage, storm issues that come through. Between this one and we have a small cherry picker bucket truck, those are our two biggest pieces of equipment that are utilized out at the forestry.
In regards to renting a type of unit for that, and I'll put it strictly out on a storm basis, that'd be very challenging to find something in a need basis to, oh, what do we have to work with? So, and it does help with the electric end, too. If they have something to work with, it's there. It's readily available.
And this might be a naive question, but for those, for those periods of time when it's not in use, do cities ever rent our equipment out or somehow share them across? I mean, if it's something that's not day-in, twenty-four-seven in use, is that something that happens? Is that a thing?
I've done that in a previous life. The problem is, it comes down to, like Chad said, when I need it, that person needs it.
We probably use this over a thousand hours a year, and for, for purposes of contractors. If they can get seven hundred hours a year, they're doing all right. So, the fact that we're doing fifty percent better than what a contractor uses, that's, but that seven hundred is kind of the rough break-even point. If they, if they don't get seven hundred hours of usage, then they're, they're losing money on it. But we, we work these things, and this one's twenty-six years old, so this is a, in dog years, this is a really old, this is a really old dog.
And for safety reasons, too. There's a number of inspections and tests that these things must go through, so.
This isn't something that Ash Corp. just kind of readily has, that we could just say, hey, can we borrow it?
We actually lease all our, all of ours, too. We don't even own them.
They don't make them, not these.
Not these ones. This is a driving, a driving vehicle.
It's like the man lift, right? The tall bucket.
But a driving one, yeah.
I believe that's all we have in the CIP.
And we're about twenty-three minutes, a little later than scheduled. I'd still suggest we give ourselves like a half hour, and city attorney and city clerk are, are first on the agenda, but generally, they, they're pretty quick.
Stretch our legs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck the next day and a half.
Have a good field.
Yes.
Visit our website at ashkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at ashkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Ashkosh FM one oh one point nine.